Good morning. Good morning. There we go. Good morning, everyone. All right. Good morning. I don't know if I'm loud enough or not, so you tell me. Is everyone where you can hear this morning? Let's see. All right. Welcome. And I guess instead of me saying welcome, thank you for welcoming us. We have been treated very kindly this morning and just build the community here. We're in a place that I'm sure is full of great history. And we are very pleased that you have welcomed us in. And we want to thank you for that. And thank you for your hospitality. And hopefully, we're going to have a good day today. And good to see all these young people here this morning. Good to see you. And I know that you've had some good history in this place here. And we want to thank you for letting us be here. We're going to begin this morning with a moment of silence. And so I want you to join me this morning as we pause for a minute minute to ask for wisdom, direction, what will be best for students here in this community. And let's also remember the other communities around the state that have been impacted by the recent tornadoes. Let's remember them as we stop. And just take a moment to take a breath and make sure that we are doing doing what we need to do today. So join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. We have some recognitions this morning. Dr. Ray?
Good morning. Good morning and welcome to the Marvel Lane School District in Marvel, Arkansas. Let's give it up for Marvel Lane School District. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner. The pledge will be led by Jamariyon Howard, followed by the Star Spangled Banner by Janiah Johnson.
Hello, you all. My name is Jamariyon Howard. We are at Marvel Lane School. I will be leading you guys on the pledge. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, reliving itself for all. You may be seated.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight last gleam, whose bright stars they bright shone through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched whistled garrulous singing? In the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was the flag. Oh, say, does that Star Spangled Banner yet wave for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. You may be seated.
That was very good. And there's somebody in the audience that can sing.
So, good morning again. My name is Dr. Katina Simpson Ray, and I am the proud superintendent of the Marvel Lane School District. I would like to take this time to welcome each of you to our campus. As a form of introduction, I would like to welcome Secretary Alila, if you would wait. The Arkansas State Board of Education. I would also like to recognize the Marvel Lane School Board members. If you would, please stand. I would also like to recognize my colleagues and superintendents from around the surrounding districts. If you are a superintendent or a board member, please stand. We would also like to recognize community leaders. We would like for Senator Murdock to please stand. We have Representative McElroy, please stand. We also have our mayors here from both communities with the mayor of Elaine. Please stand, Mayor Hicks. We also have the mayor of Marvel, Mayor Guest, please stand. We would also like to recognize our parents. If you are a parent and you're in the audience, would you please stand? Coming back home today, we have some alumni. If you are an alumni of Marvel or Elaine, please stand at this time. We would also like to recognize any supporters of the Marvel Lane School District. If you are a supporter of the Marvel Lane School District, please stand. So, we would like to thank you for being here today. This is educational history taking place right now. All of you gathered here today to ensure that the Marvel Lane School District students have the tools that they need to be successful academically, socially, and emotionally. And again, we say thank you for that. Again, we hope that you feel welcome and enjoy your stay while you're on our campus. Give yourself another round of applause. So, we would like to give an historical overview of the Marvel Lane School District. At this time, we would ask for Cadence Morant and Trayvon Campbell to come forward.
Welcome to our community and our school, Marvel Elaine High School. You are located in Marvel, Arkansas. Established in 1877 as a town well-known for its railroad, the Arkansas Midland Railway Company.
The latter part of our name reflects our neighboring town named Arkansas. Founded in 1836, what began as a swamp link became one of the richest parts of the state, better known for its fertile farming. Our schools were consolidated in 2006 and became what we know today as Marvel Elaine Schools.
You are in an area with a large historical significance as many are aware of the Elaine massacre and land theft of 1919. One night in Elaine, local black landowners and sharecroppers met together at a church to resist unfair percentages of the profits without even ever presenting the sharecroppers detailed accounting trap unfair debt.
A mob of white men shot into the church. More violence ensued. And the Elaine massacre occurred where hundreds were killed, contributing to its title as one of the worst racially motivated massacres in the country and a part of what is known as the Red Summer. Although there are two different versions of the history, what is not refuted is that the root of the violence is resentment against black citizens, specifically black farm owners who were determined to resist the exploitation of their labor and their land.
So, as you all are gathered here in regards to the educational future of Marvel and Elaine students and families, may you be reminded that there is strength and resilience here that can never be taken from the people of this community.
A determination to remember the legacy that our families upheld to be representatives of joy, love, peace, ambition, determination, strength, innovation, creativity, and life. And it is with the spirit of life that will live with you to our own that will never be forgotten. Welcome to Marvel Elaine.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to recognize some students. Our first student that we will be recognized is Deanne Murray. Deanne, would you come forward, please? Deanne Murray is being recognized for being the top four in the job interview portion of the Ed Rising Conference. She will go on to compete at the Educational Rising National Conference in Orlando, Florida this June. She also has consistently performed above the national average from ninth and 10th grades during her ACT Aspire standardized testing. Deanne is here, and let's give her a round of applause. Oh, we can do better than that. Let's give it up for Deanne. We would also like to recognize students who participate in our Student Ambassador Program. These students were top-tier leaders that welcomed and assisted our co-op specialists from across the state during their district orientation. They greeted specialists upon their arrival, provided school tours, and engaged with our guests to help them feel welcome and answer any questions that they may have. Student Ambassador Program, we have Isaiah Campbell, Coleman, Carla Naylor, Jamariyon Howard, Trayvon Campbell, Shamaya Brown, Dylan Zachary, Dylan Green, and Jordan Jacobs. Please stand at this time. We would also like to recognize our 2022-2023 MES Marvel Elaine High School Senior Boys Basketball Team. They had a successful year as they put in the work to qualify for a spot in the state basketball tournament. We are very proud of this accomplishment. At this time, we would like to recognize the team and their coach, Coach James Copeland. Please stand at this time. Thank you. We would also like to recognize some special Marvel Lane School District teachers. Mr. James Copeland was recently accepted as a member of the Impact Arkansas Fellowship, a non-traditional leadership program provided by the University of Arkansas and funded by the Walton Foundation. The fellowship's purpose is to prepare future leaders in low-income schools throughout Arkansas. Fellows receive a master's degree in educational leadership upon completion of this 18-month program. Mr. Copeland, would you please stand and be recognized at this time? We would also like to recognize Marvel Lane's 2022-2023 Elementary School Teacher of the Year, pre-K teacher and director, Ms. Jameka Lowery. Please stand at this time. We would also like to recognize Marvel Lane's 2022-2023 High School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Latille Albert. Ms. Albert, please stand and be recognized. Thank you. Our last recognition is near and dear to us, our Volunteer of the Year. This special honoree is a retired teacher, community activist, and leader. Although she is a retired teacher of 50 years, she continues to support the Marvel Lane School District by greeting students and teachers before and after school, volunteering in the media center, overseeing district fundraising, chaperoning overnight athletics, and regularly attending community and board meetings. At this time, please stand as we all recognize Ms. Rosie Tate. That concludes our recognition.
Thank you. And I can see a lady that's walking back to her seat right now that has a heart for the students of this district. And I know that she is well-loved here and appreciated. We're going to begin our agenda now. First, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, not seeing any changes. We'll start our action agenda. The first item on our action agenda is the consideration of the Marvel Lane School District and Ms. Stacy Smith. Do you know if you already get this hung on by the phone? Okay. I didn't know I was. I was going to get by her. Thank you. All right, good morning. So, we're going to start with kind of doing an overview on some of the things that we're going to talk about today with Marvel Lane. We are not going to rehash the recent. Stop for just a second, Ms. Smith. I don't think they can hear you in the back, so we may need to adjust the microphones for a minute. Let's get. You may have to end up holding it. I'm not sure.
Hello, one, two, three?
Okay. All right. You're going to have to get close. You may have to end up holding it. I know that's going to be awkward. Try, try.
Can you hear me? Hello?
In the back. Tell me if you can hear. Yes, okay. All right, we're good now.
Okay. Yep, can you hear?
Yes.
All right. So, we're not going to go over the data elements as far as their letter grades, their test scores, the number of teachers that are not certified. We've done that presentation, and that decision was already made. So, what we're here to talk about today are the next steps. Okay? So, talking about the timeline for Marvel Lane, I kind of gave you just a flash real quick of the past five years. All right, so 2018 and 19, the district was classified in fiscal distress. That was in April of 2019. And 2019 and 20, worked very closely with fiscal services, trying to get them out of fiscal distress. That was at the end of the year is when COVID hit. There was no assessment. 2021, the district was released from fiscal distress. And that was based on very in-depth conversations with the current superintendent, the progress we were making. It was also right in the middle of COVID. If they were still on the fiscal distress list, there would have been implications then for the 350 in the fiscal distress. So, we removed them because legislation allows us to still work with them and review their request for spending for an additional two years. Released in 2021 from fiscal distress. However, the OCSS office continued to work with, and the fiscal office at the department continued to work with them. During 2122, they had a full-year interim superintendent. Again, OCSS was in the schools, working with the schools. After testing that year, all the schools were rated as an F. They were actually scored the lowest performing schools in the state, the elementary and the high school. The district did receive the waiver for 350. In 2223, this school year, they've been identified as more rigorous intervention needed for comprehensive support. And that's the federal accountability identification. So, they were identified as CSI in 2018-19, and they've never gotten off that list. And so now they're on that next step. State Board classified them in Level 5 Support in November, and then did not grant the waiver in December. So, that's where we are today, okay? Because the waiver was not granted, the conversation for consolidation. I will tell you, since the Level 5 Support was granted in December, we've had multiple staff on campus weekly. In fact, the OCSS staff that's here, if you'll stand for me real quick. These folks, they're in the back and right hand side. They are here weekly as a presence, supporting directly the students on campus. Today alone, we have 11 co-op people from the Du Queen Mina Co-op and two from the Guy Fentor Co-op here assisting in the high school, directly teaching in classrooms. So, we have been providing very direct support for instruction since we classified them in Level 5. So, what are the considerations today? One, we have to talk about the consideration of consolidation. But as you all know, we've had a legislative session. And so when you made the decision not to grant the waiver back in November, December, we did not have some of the other options that I'm going to talk about with you today. We have two pieces of legislation right now, the House Bill 1504 and Senate Bill 262, which both have been signed. I will tell you, Senate Bill 262 did not have an emergency clause. Therefore, it does not impact any decision you are making today. It will go into effect around August, okay? House Bill 1504 did have an emergency clause, and it has been signed. And so it does have an effect on decisions that you'll make today. And I will kind of talk you through some of those points. If this board decides to stay with consolidation, I will probably ask you to wait another week before we make a final decision to make sure that we have vetted everything we need to do as far as some mileage pieces with this legislation. But I will talk you through that as we go through today. The other third bucket that we have to consider today is some opportunities that are provided in the Arkansas Learn SPIL. And that's about a transformation contract. So, we've got several things at play today. And as I'm walking you through the different scenarios, I will try to make these connections for you as we go out. But I'm going to tell you, if you need to stop me at some point and ask me to repeat or clarify, feel free to do so, okay? Because it's a lot of information to digest. All right, so first off, I want, we're going to talk about the consolidation and options that are there. In your binders, not only, I've given you a hand copy of my presentation, but in your binders in the back, you also have some bigger maps if you want to look at those. But this first here is a map of the surrounding districts. And I wanted, this was something Mr. Wood specifically asked for, just to make sure he could really see the region and what was happening. One of the things that I want you to notice about this region is there was definitely some landmark litigation and legislation and education that definitely came out of this region. You can see on the map where Lakeview is situated, and Lakeview was consolidated with the Barton School District. Also, this region has been impacted heavily by multiple consolidations over the years. Most of our districts, if you think about them, have two names. Barton, Lexa, Marvel, Elaine, Helena, West Helena. And then there's a assortment of communities that have been consolidated or annexed throughout whose names are no longer in the titles. So, just know that there is a rich history here. And there is also very deep feelings about consolidation and how it impacts students and families and communities. We want to acknowledge that. And I know that is something that you want to be thoughtful about as you're going through and making a decision today. So, talking about House Bill 1504. There were two elements to that bill that talked specifically about who's eligible for it. If you're a district that didn't qualify for a waiver, which Marvel was, and you're under 350 students, and a student would have to ride on a bus for more than 40 miles, the law basically says you can't be consolidated. You have to be assumed by the state. The state. That's why if we stay with the route of consolidation, I will ask you another day or two to make sure we get that right. When you're looking at, let me go back to this one right here. I do want to point this out, on this map here, I put this map up here, so you can see Marvel, and then you can see Elaine, that line there kind of divides what was previously the Elaine Community and Elaine School District, and above was Marvel, it's just a general view of that. So when I'm talking to you in a minute about different options, if the district were to divide, and I would say the Elaine Community or the Marvel Community, that's kind of what I'm talking about, there's two different groups there. Any questions on that part before I move forward? Okay. So let's talk about the Barton option, and I'm gonna lead you through the pros and the cons. And I also want to remind this real quick, as I'm taking you through these options, we're also gonna talk about the option of Arkansas Learns as another option at the end, all right? So, don't feel like this is your only choices here, okay? The Barton option. The pros of the Barton option, and the map that you see here on the screen actually shows what the Barton School District would look like if they consolidated with Marvel and Elaine, both communities, the full school district. The pros, keeps the students together, it is the closest district, just down the road, it is in the same county. Dr. Ray had shared with me that she had done a survey at one point, and that a lot of the community had expressed that Barton would be the choice. So those are some of the high points of Barton. I have spent some time and talked to Mr. Guthrie, the superintendent of Barton, about concerns. One thing that Mr. Guthrie really wanted me to emphasize today was, he does not want anybody to walk out of here today to think that Barton doesn't want the students of this community. He was very clear, kids are kids, and we're gonna do what's best for kids. A very big concern, though, for the Barton School District is in rezoning. You can look at the large area that would become Barton, that includes both the Marvel and the Elaine. If you look at that population map that I showed you earlier, it is possible that because they would have to rezone, the Barton School Board, position-wise, could potentially lose four to five of their positions from Marvel and Elaine Communities, and maintaining only two to three from the Barton-Lexa Community. So there was great concern by their board about that. They feel like they are making positive progress right now in their district, where their schools are, they feel like they have momentum. So there was concern about that, and the complete changing of the board and how that makeup would be. They also shared that they are much more comfortable taking part of the community, the Elaine Community. They felt like, as far as distance-wise, that that was the best place for those students to go, that were part of that community. There already have a large number of students that school choice from the Elaine Community into their school district, and they felt like with the number of students that would be coming, it would be something that they would be able to handle, easily put into their school system, and be able to meet the students' needs. Taking on the entire Marvel Community and Elaine Community, all 300 students, and there are currently around 700 now, that would be a big job. But again, he said he didn't want anybody to walk away thinking, we don't want kids, because that's not it. So, pros and cons there.
Can, can we ask a question here?
Yes.
What would that do to, if we did just, if, if it was just the Elaine Community, what would that do to the number of board members if they were rezoned?
I would have to dig into that more, I would think it would probably, the population there is not as much, it'd probably be at least two.
So, two out of the seven?
Two, I would say two to three.
Two to three out of seven, okay.
Most of the concentration of population in the Marvel Community.
Okay. Say that again, I'm sorry.
Most of the concentration for the population is in the Marvel Community. Steve, Mr. Sutton, sorry.
I'm not even pushing. My, my question is, when you say keep students together, are you saying that this district would maintain its capacity well?
So, I'm gonna repeat your question so that everyone could hear. So he was asking specifically about what did I mean by the phrase, keep students together. What I was paraphrasing was, the students from the Marble Lane School District, together as a school, student body, would go to Barton. Barton School District would, they have said they will close these buildings.
That's important.
Thank you for that clarification. Another option for you to consider would be a Barton-Helena-West Helena option. So this would be dividing the district. Now you're gonna see Barton involved in all three of these scenarios, and that is applying the new piece of legislation, that a student cannot be on a bus for more than 40 miles. A student traveling from the further southern region of the Elaine Community would be on a bus for more than 40 miles going to Helena. But if the district was split and the Elaine Community went to Barton, again, they're at that, that furthest student is at 34 miles, okay, and then less than. So, the pros of a Barton-Helena-West Helena option. Elaine, Elaine students are closer to Barton. Several Elaine Community students already school choice into the Barton School District now. It is in the same county. The bus rail to Barton from Elaine is actually shorter than the current bus route, and Helena-West Helena is equipped to take on the Marvel population of students. Talked to Superintendent McGee, they do have room, they do have facilities, so they would be equipped and could handle that number of students coming into their district. The cons?
I was just gonna say, is there any option for the entire senior class to be able to migrate to one senior school, or is it purely based on?
I think at that point, that's where we would have like school choice options, we will allow seniors to school choice to the district, and then work with students and districts surrounding. Yes, I can. She asked, was there an option to keep the senior class from Marvel and Elaine School District together to one school? And I said that it would probably just be school choice at that point. Okay, concerns with this option. Currently, Helena-West Helena is a Level 5, classified in need of Level 5, state authority, and they currently have a limited authority board. While I love to brag on the progress we're making, there's still a lot of work. And I think we can, we all acknowledge that, the superintendent acknowledged that, their board president is here, she would probably acknowledge that. There's still a lot of work to be done, and they're, they're on a good path, but they're not there yet, but that is a concern. There is a concern regarding debt, so let me talk you through this. Because this was, this is a big one, and this impacts both the two. Right now, for facilities for Marvel Lane, they have about a $4 million facilities debt, okay? Right now, they pull in enough local revenue to pay their debt service payment each month. So their local revenue with the communities of Elaine and the communities of Marvel with their mills, they pay, they bring in enough money to pay that payment. So if it was a consolidation with Barton alone, there would be enough local revenue brought in to actually pay the payment for the debt. The concern here is if you split the community, and the Elaine students go to Barton, there's no facilities in that area in which there is debt. So Barton would get zero debt, but they would take the local revenue from the students in the community that's going to their school. Helena would get the Marvel Community, in which this is where these facilities are, and that is where the debt is, and so they would take the local revenue from this region. It's probably not enough to actually cover the debt service payment. So that is a big concern, would be a big concern for either district taking on this area. So that's another negative or concern to think about. It is 17 miles from Marvel High School to Helena-West Helena High School, so we're well within, you know, range-wise, even if we go past the Marvel Community, you're not gonna get over 40 for this community traveling to Helena. It's about 21 minutes, if that's not on a bus, that's if you're driving in a car. Helena, Helena-West Helena has expressed that they would probably, most likely, close these campuses, they would like to use them or consider exploring possibilities for an Ale, CTE pathways, doing some technical things. They wouldn't just want them to sit here, they would want to figure out something to do with them. But as far as the students staying on this campus, most likely they would close. Third option, Barton and Lee County, and you're gonna see several of the same pros and cons. And here is the map that shows what that would look like, you can see Helena on here, they would not be a part of the consolidation, but you can just see where they, where they're located. The Elaine Community, again, they would go to Barton because of the mileage, and this was one of the points when Mr. Stone actually met with Dr. Ray, they drove around the, the whole district, because in the beginning, Mr. Stone was like, we can take them all, we've got room, we could do this. And then when they really drove to the far south end of the Elaine Community, he said there's no way a kid could go on a bus from here all the way up to there, you're talking over an hour easily. So there was, so that, that, the split part of the Marvel Community going wasn't as big of a concern. Several Elaine Community students already go to Barton have said that. Lee County is a contiguous district, where Helena-West Helena is not, you're driving through one to get to another, same county, but not side by side. Lee is side by side, different county. Lee, Lee County is equipped to be able to take on the number of students from Marvel. As far as hiring additional staff, it's not an overload, some of their classes already have space to be able to add extra students, they would have to add FTEs, but not, it's not like how, putting in a whole school. And that was the same for Helena. Some other concerns, Lee County is also a district in need of Level 5 Support and under state authority. They do not currently have a board. So, we've done this before as a board, where we annexed a district with the districts who didn't have a board, and there was very hard community feelings about that. You know, it's one of those things, every time I stand before you with these things, I hope we learn from our past, and we think about that as we move forward. So that's something for this board to consider, they do not have a board, we are their board. There is a concern regarding the debt. The miles from the elementary to the elementary is 23 miles, the high schools, I think it was 21. They are in two different counties, and that was expressed as a concern by the county tax collector or assessor, and they too indicated that they most likely would close this campus. So those were the three scenarios for consolidation. There is not a winner in any of the three options. I do think you have some that maybe, if you're gonna pick one, there's some that I would say this may be the most logical one, and we can get into that conversation later, okay? But to me, those are the three options that if you were going to continue on with the path of consolidation, those would be the three to consider. I'm gonna pause at that point before I move on to the next part of it. Mr. Sutton?
Do you happen to know what the current outstanding debt is for Marvel?
It's about $4 million.
Repeat your question.
And Eric is here, and he's got more of the specific on the financials.
I'm sorry?
He's, Dr. Saunders is here, he can go into more specifics if needed, but it's about, around $4 million.
And the current student count is?
300 and, 306.
Can, can you tell me how the mileage rates compare within the three districts?
Yes, I can. So the mileage rates for Lee County is 28.3. The mileage rate for Helena-West Helena is 43.8. For Barton, it's 41.5. And for Marvel-Elaine, it is 33. Okay. So let me, yes.
Is there any possibility for, for any?
Just, I'll repeat it.
Is there any possibility for any COVID debt relief on any type of outstanding debt or building or anything like, because that's happened to a lot of times.
So Dr. Hill's question was, was there a possibility of COVID relief funds to be used for debt? I don't think so, that would be a question I, because it's not directly related to COVID. There is definitely some, some things that we could investigate a little bit, if today we stick with consolidation, and I ask for that week to make sure I'm interpreting the law correctly, and we make sure the mileage piece is right, that is something I will look into. Mr. Wood?
Stacy, as you were explaining the history, as we get to where we are today, kind of skipped over the part between December's meeting and today's meeting, where the local community had an opportunity to work on their own consolidation plan or plan to avoid state board action. What, what of these options was considered by the local community prior to today when they had the opportunity to do it, and what were the, what were the results of those?
Yeah, so, and, and Dr. Ray, in a minute, you'll be able to ask more specific questions. I'm gonna paraphrase what happens, and then the type of question. Deeper. But I am aware that she made arrangements and met with the different superintendents from around the region. I know she did tours for those that were, that went on some tours of the region to, you know, see what the, how far it is to the Elaine Community. They went over finances together. In the end, the Marble Lane School Board did not come up with a recommendation to the state board. So, when they talked about different, different folks, I think one thing they felt strongly about, and again, I'll let them make sure that this is accurate, they felt strongly that they wanted the Marvel and Elaine Communities to stay together. That they wanted the kids to, the kids to stay together, that was kind of a conversation that went on. A lot of times, when that conversation happened, it was, not sure we could take, take everybody. And so they never came to an agreement with another district. Because it, again, this is, while we're talking about what's happening to these schools, this is gonna have an impact on another community as well. And so during that time period, it was about the two communities working together, two school boards working together to say, can we come up with a solution that we both agree on? That did not happen.
Were all of these options considered by the local board?
I'd have to let them answer that question. So I can pause now, and we can go to questions if you want to, or I can keep going through my presentation.
Let's, let's go ahead and go, go through all of it, and then, then we'll, we can come back to the board questions, I think that will work better.
I don't want to answer for the, their boards or for their.
Stacy, as you were explaining the history, as we get to where we are today, you kind of skipped over the part between December's meeting and today's meeting, where the local community had an opportunity to work on their own consolidation plan or plan to avoid state board action. What of these options was considered by the local community prior to today, when they had the opportunity to do it? And what were the results of those?
Yeah, so, and... And Dr. Ray, in a minute, you'll be able to ask more specific questions. I'm going to paraphrase what happened, and then the type of question I can come up with. She can go deeper. But I am aware that she made arrangements and met with the different superintendents from around the region. I know she did tours for those that went on some tours of the region to, you know, see how far it is to the Elaine community. They went over finances together. In the end, the Marvel Elaine School Board did not come up with a recommendation to the state board. So when they talked about different folks, I think one thing they felt strongly about, and again, I'll let them make sure that this is accurate, they felt strongly that they wanted the Marvel and Elaine communities to stay together. That they wanted the kids to stay together. That was kind of a conversation that went on. A lot of times, when that conversation happened, it was, "Not sure we can take everybody." And so they never came to an agreement with another district. Because, again, while we're talking about what's happening to these schools, this is going to have an impact on another community as well. And so during that time period, it was about the two communities working together, two school boards working together to say, "Can we come up with a solution that we both agree on?" That did not happen.
Were all of these options considered by the local board?
I'd have to let them answer that question. So I can pause now, and we can go to questions if you want to, or I can keep going through my presentation.
Let's go ahead and go through all of it, and then we can come back to the board questions. I think that will work better.
I don't want to answer for their boards or for their folks. All right. So now, earlier when I showed you different things to consider, consolidation was one of the things to consider. Since then, we've had Arkansas Learns, which is legislation that has been recently passed. It is the governor's landmark educational policy that was passed this session. And there is an opportunity in Arkansas Learns that could benefit this community if this board so chooses to go that direction. So Arkansas Learns allows the Department of Education to use this option to actually go into what we call a transformation contract with a third-party entity. Okay? This was not an option for you to even consider in November and December. What a transformation contract is, and again, this was signed in an emergency bill that was passed, and signed in March. So this literally just happened. A transformation contract would allow the school district, the board, local school district board, or the commissioner of education to enter into a contract with a third-party entity. To be eligible to go into a contract like this, the school district has to have a D or F rating, which the district does, or they have to be classified in Level 5, which the district is. It gives them the opportunity to contract, to partner with their governing body of an open enrollment charter, or another entity approved by the state board. We don't have a long list of other entities approved by the state board, because this is all moving very quickly. Okay? But we do have open enrollment charter organizations, management organizations. We do have educational cooperatives in the state. We did not go out and ask for proposals. But I will tell you, I've had three different options or proposals sent in saying, "We want to work with the Marvel Elaine School District." One was by charter. Another was a proposal by two co-ops working together to say, "Hey, we want to try to do something. We want to try to help." And that came out organically, them being here and being in the buildings. And another was a community organization that's sending a letter saying, "Hey, we have some ideas that we would like you guys to consider." I think that's promising. So there is, I will tell you, the fact that we had people reaching out to us when we were considering, or when we were vetting the different consolidation options, and seeing that every one of them had some serious concerns, seeing that there were people proactively reaching out to us saying, "Hey, we want to do something," was actually pretty refreshing. Because it gave us, I think, some other options for this board to consider that actually pay attention to some of the things that you heard by community members at the last state board meeting. One of the opportunities that was put forth by a charter came from listening to community members at the last state board meeting, and folks meeting together afterwards on their own. It's the opportunity that some of, I think, I feel like some people feel like this has given them an opportunity for voice, and some more opportunities for choice. So let me kind of talk you through some other things there. If the board decided to go down this route... I'm almost kissing it. Okay. I mean, my lips are touching it, but it feels weird. All right. So if the board chooses to go down this route, you would have to rescind your previous vote not to grant the Act 60 waiver. You then would have to vote to grant the original petition to waive the consolidation requirement. So you would be undoing what you did back in November and December. The district would still be classified in need of Level 5 support. Even throughout this transformation contract, we still are short on time. We are still short...
Concerns about staffing?
There's still concerns about staffing. But it does give some opportunity for us to lengthen the timeline a little bit and try to put some more supports around a possible proposal. So as a board, what do you need to consider? For Learns, it's a new option for a transformational contract. It is listening to stakeholders. It is encouraging parent empowerment. The district would remain in Level 5 support, therefore, our office would still be supporting directly. It does keep the district open. It would use the current facilities. It would allow the local revenue to stay within the Marvel Elaine community, so the debt that we talked about earlier would be split. And it still allows school choice to be an option. So if we went with a third-party charter management organization, or a co-op plan, or something different, and a parent decided in this community that wasn't for them, they still have the option to school choice, because that half is open, and they could go to one of the other surrounding school districts. Yes, sir?
I'm sure there's a cost for that contract. Who pays?
The Marvel Elaine School District's budget would be the one covering that contract. So I do want to say this. Because I don't want people to go, "There's some false hope here, we're going to keep it all." All right? There has to be a transformative change in this district. What is currently happening in the classrooms is not okay. We are not providing the kids the education that they deserve. So if we went with this transformational contract, I would recommend to the board, the department would recommend to the board, that we would dissolve their board. We would keep them in capacity in an advisory model for the remainder of the year. We've got seven, eight weeks left of school. There was no assumption through a consolidation that the board would stay intact. So I don't feel like this would be, you know, nobody was expecting the board to stay in place. But I do believe the board members, I do believe the community members want to have a voice. They want to be heard, they want to be listened to. So I would hope that we would assume authority over the district. So right now, they're classified in Level 5, so let me make that distinction for you. You have not assumed authority over this district. So while I have support here, helping in classrooms, we do not direct the day-to-day operations of this district. Dr. Ray does not answer to me. Okay? The board does not answer to me in the OCSS. Even when I say to me, I'm saying that is the state plan, the OCSS. Okay? I offer support, and we work alongside each other. Okay? So if this were to happen, today, to assume authority and appoint the commissioner as the board. Under this same plan, I will tell you, there is still concerns about can we staff the I have had a meeting, an hour and a half, with a charter organization that has actually done public meetings in the community. They on their own have taken it and run. I think there has been some thought or comment that there's this deal already done, and there's not. In my conversations with them, they said, "We want to be up and ready to go if we're allowed to do this." They're already out recruiting staff if this were to happen. So I do think there is an option there with a charter management company to come in and do this. There still would have to be support provided, and the state would continue to do that. On the consolidation side, what do you do? It might address the staffing concerns, because these other districts do have the staff to pull in the kids. A lot of their staff, though, are not licensed as well. It still provides school choice as an option. However, we would be looking at closing of this building. We would be consolidating this school district with two other districts that are struggling. Then there is also the debt concern, and the board's own concern. So if there was a recommendation from the department today, it would be to go with a transformation contract and to direct the commissioner to look into that. So that would be our recommendation today.
Hey Stacy, I have a question. One thing we hadn't talked about with Arkansas Learns' transformation contract, what is the timeline on that?
So his question was, what was the timeline on a transformation contract? What we would probably look at would be a three-year contract to begin with. The district is classified in Level 5, which you guys classified them in, I believe it was December. The five-year time period started then. We would not want to go into a contract with someone that exceeded that five years. All right? But within that two- to three-year proposal, three probably makes more sense. That's probably what we'd be initially looking at. And then the board would then have to determine at some point, is it working? Is it not working? Do we need to continue down this path? Do we need to look at another option?
Two-fold. If the board, we decided to go with, let's say, West Helena, Helena consolidation option, which is currently Level 5, we could very well end back up in the same stance at a later date.
Right. Mr. Harrison said if he went with the consolidation option of Helena West Helena, who's also in Level 5 right now, that we could end up in the same state. And I agree. Again, I can't say that any of these options are perfect. One, because we're on a very tight timeline. If we do a transformation contract, it will be very quick, but we have to do something different.
Next year?
This is off again. We cannot continue to do what we're doing now.
What if we get to a point where they can't afford the third-party contract?
So that's within the contract negotiations. Okay? I think the promising piece here is that these third-party entities have reached out to us to say, "We want to be a part of this." Most of the time, especially with charters, they're not pulling in local revenue. In this case, this would not be a charter school. This would be the Marvel Elaine School District in a contract with a management organization facilitating their school.
What would happen to this new contract for next year if that level 5 is reapplying?
Most likely, they would all have to reapply.
So I want to make sure that we understand, this third-party would not be called a charter. It would still be the Marvel Elaine District. They would get the mileage rate, property tax, everything would be like what we call a normal district. It would be just run by a third-party.
The board for the Marvel Elaine School District, if you were to appoint the commissioner, would be the commissioner. And then that would be going into a contract with the charter organization. Or a third-party entity.
Whoever the third-party is, yes. So the third-party would run it, and he would be the board, but everything else would still be the Marvel Elaine District.
All those points would have to be done. All those points would have to be...
You got to turn it on.
Right. So it would still be the Marvel Elaine School District that would contract with a third-party entity. This legislature allows any school district in the state to do this. So it's a school district in the state that has a D or F in one of...
And come back, Tommy, it's five after 11:00. We come back about 11:20. That should give them time to work this issue out and get us going again. How about that? Because we were to the question. I appreciate your patience helping us get the kinks worked out. You can imagine getting microphone system in here and getting it to livestream to the rest of the state has...
I told everybody, I didn't tell Jill. And Fitz, my goodness.
I, I want to say a quick thank you to, to the ones that are our technical assistants this morning. You, you can imagine getting a microphone system to, to do what we're doing and then plus also livestreaming it to the, to the rest of the state is a, is a big issue. And I, I want to say thank you to all of them because they have worked diligently today and, and we appreciate their efforts and their hard work. So thank you to them. And so Ms. Smith, I think we hopefully got all the kinks worked out, so we're ready to begin again.
Thank you. I, I will say the county assessor, Jerome Turner, is it Turner, is that right? Came up to me during the break and he said, are we, this is his question, are we just kicking the can down the road? And here, here's the things we have to consider when, when we're doing this. This region needs a long-term plan that is more than just the schools. And we need, there needs to be time to establish a 10-year, 15, 20-year plan on what this looks like, really digging into the data and, and making sure that we've got a framework in place to make sure that we're doing the right things. But what I do know is when we have a school that is not meeting the needs of our students today currently, we can't wait 10 years to figure that out. And I was very, I, I hope that when I delivered the presentation in November, I might, I expressed my concerns for the instruction going on in this school and, and the struggles that they were facing. So today, Board, you have to decide between, do we move forward with the consolidation? And the department does believe that there are some problems with that, specifically around the debt, specifically around consolidating with other districts who are struggling. Our recommendation to the board would be to do a transformation contract. It would be done very, very fast. That too has its obstacles and problems. Either way, we, our unit, our department is willing to roll up our sleeves and do what has to be done to support whatever decision this board makes. I do think that the Arkansas Lawrence Opportunity does allow and does listen to what the stakeholders in this region were asking for. So I, I say that, but I also say it has to be a transformational change and we can't continue to do what we, what we, what we've been doing and just call it something different. But with that, if this is something we do, we have to make a 10-year plan. We, we have to. If enrollment continues to decline in the region as it has been, we have to, we have to have a bigger conversation about what that looks like and do our current legislation and policies benefit what we're trying to do? If this transformational contract works, you know, a lot of folks, when you look at the consolidation laws, it says administrative consolidation. But financially, it's not always feasible to keep those buildings open and just consolidate. So you see buildings closing down. So there's things there to talk about. But there's not current legislation or policy to support any conversation on that right now, today. So there's, so I, I'm going to challenge the region that, that they need to come together and start looking at how it looks long-term. And I know that we've got folks working on that. So I'm going to pause here to see if the board has any further questions from me. And then we have local area superintendents, we have the board for Marvel Lane School District, the whole board is here actually, if they have any comments or questions as well.
Okay. So, so let me give the board a little bit of direction here. We have representatives from, you said Marvel Lane Superintendent and Board, representatives from Barton, Lee County and Helena, West Helena here. Also, if you have questions about the third-party, what you would need to say in that question would be, if you have things that you would like the department to address, things that you're concerned about, that you would want to make sure that were in a third-party contract, questions today. That would all have to be outlined in the contract. I can tell you our number-one priority setting up for the Contract for Education would be on the academics and making sure that our classrooms are staffed, making sure that we have quality curriculum and instruction going and that there's a way to measure that. So, those would be some of the number-one priorities that we would be looking at. We would be expecting the community, because we're trying, this is an effort to listen to what the community asks for, we would be expecting the community to show up and do their part. So, if that means that there needs to be assistance with outside activities, because when you talk about the tiered systems of support and what are other things that make a quality community, and there's lots of things, but it's the community's maybe responsibility to provide some of those things. The school isn't alone, can't fix what's happening throughout the whole region. It takes the entire community to be a part of that. So, I know I can't give a lot of detail about the, so, when we, if the decision of this board is to move that direction, we will literally say, "We need a call of proposals." We'll sit down and we'll meet with each of the proposals and we'll look at who is best situated to come in here and be able to start school next year, meeting the academic needs of students first and then hitting some of those other items.
When you're looking, obviously, as you stated, one of the large challenges in this whole region is staffing and finding teachers and finding teachers who will stay long-term. When your agency has been working with, looking at teacher salaries, where are we around that? What is that conversation looking like? Will there, there won't be waivers from that?
No. The expectation for this school district's teacher salary, if it remains under a transformation contract, would be a beginning salary of $50,000. That was outlined within the Arkansas Learns legislation. So, there's no waiver for that. And again, this would be the Marble Lane Public School District going into a contract with a third party.
And that third party would then, you know, come to us for waivers for licensure or other things, just like a regular district?
Those would be outlined in the contract that this board then would approve. We would be bringing that back to you.
Okay. We, looking, you know, looking at, again, back to academics, students aren't performing in literacy where we are. What type of supports do you envision the agency to provide or a third party to provide to really dig down and get students to reach their full potential?
Good question. And I'm going to actually talk a little bit about two or other districts that are in this region. So, we've got Dr. Stone here, or Michael Stone, and we've got Keith McGee, Helena, West Helena, and Lee County. And when we talk about the support going into those districts and what we've done, it would be similar here. One, we would expect the third party to have a curriculum aligned to the science of reading. We would expect those teachers to be, they would be receiving the literacy coaching support that any school district in the state that has a D or F would be receiving. So, they would have a direct coach that's directly working with them at any time. The accountability piece, and this is something Mr. Wood, we have visited about, on if we're pushing people in for direct coaching and folks aren't following through, what are the next steps? And so, this would be the same situation here. You know, I do believe that there is opportunity under the current way this school is structured for some efficiency pieces. And that is something you saw that we did in Helena, West Helena. We changed people's positions around, we looked at license, we moved things around. We've done that in some of our other districts too, and found people that had license that could be back in the classroom. So, there are opportunities, I think, for this school district to do something similar.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, I know you've talked about charter school that's very interested. Can you share the name of the charter school and also how successful have they been with their charters?
So, the charter school that expressed interest, that has hosted community meetings in the region is Friendship Charter. So, as we move forward, if we move forward with a transformational contract, we would really almost, I mean, if you guys made this decision today, we would pretty much kind of do an all-call. If there's anyone who's interested that wants to be a part of this, let us know. Friendship has been proactive. And again, that came out of a meeting at the last state board meeting. And I heard about it just because there were tours happening and community meetings happening. I picked up the phone and called and said, "What's going on?" And they then sent me a letter of intent that they would like to pursue something.
Can you talk to us about how successful they have been in other areas?
So, I don't have a whole lot of depth on them today. I think if they were the ones to get the transformational charter, when we come back at the next state board meeting, we would actually share their success and where they, as they've been. But I do know that they have some schools right now that are like a C.
But you're considering really keeping the teaching staff here?
We are considering, it would be keeping the building open here. It would not necessarily be keeping the current teaching staff here. Those teachers would have to apply probably under any transformational contract that we would enter into.
Okay.
And again, you know, while Friendship has reached out and showed intent, there is no done deal, okay? I will say for credit on their part, they're being proactive and pursuing an opportunity and saying, "We want to partner," but we have not sat down and negotiated any type of contract.
Okay. I think my concern too is really building capacity for the current staff and just trying to keep as many staff people here from the community, in this community, if at all possible?
If, if we are meeting the needs of students. So, the first priority is we be able to put the best person in the classroom with our students, the best people with the students. Just because you're a current employee doesn't mean you're going to be guaranteed a job. You would have to interview. If you are the best person for the position, then, but again, this would be up to the third-party entity on who they're hiring. Stacy Smith wouldn't be hiring, Secretary Oliva on that piece wouldn't be hiring.
Ms. Smith, am I correct though, no matter which one of these options we went with, whether it was a third-party or it was consolidation, the teachers would have to reapply in all of those situations? Would that be fair?
Yes.
Okay.
If we were to follow this new model of a transformation contract, who is in charge of what when it comes to Secretary, it would be Commissioner Oliva and the third-party organization. Mr. Oliva would be by law the school board and he would have entered into a management contract. Who gets to make the decisions in that situation?
The board. So, it would be if you assumed authority and made the commissioner of the board, or if you left the current board in place. So, the board would negotiate that contract.
Sure, about the contract. But I guess, I mean, who decides whether there's a basketball team, or who decides whether there's a CTE program, or who decides, who makes the decision?
Again, it would go back to who is serving as the board.
Okay. So, Commissioner Oliva?
Whoever is serving as the board would be negotiating that and making those decisions with the third-party entity.
So, is the third-party entity essentially stepping into the shoes of like a superintendent type of a role where they recommend to the board to make a decision and the board then gets to decide whether to follow that path or not and empower?
So, we still have the law, so this would still be the Marble Lane School District that would have to adhere to the laws set forth for all of our K-12 schools in the state. They would have a superintendent unless they came before and asked for a waiver of that, okay? So, they're still under the same rules and requirements that any other K-12 would be a part of. Some of the decision points in the contract, if I can, like who's providing food service, who's running transportation, who's over the academics, who's choosing the curriculum, like all of those fine points on the day-to-day operations of what a school looks like, we're going to have to see who is in best position to do all of those things. So, when I say that we had a cooperative reach out to say, "Hey, we want to help," they were best positioned to help in the area of academics. Not sure that they could all of a sudden take over the day-to-day busing, like I'm not sure that they're positioned to do that. And so, again, for us, we would have to be considering all of those factors on who can be up, who can be running by July 1, so that when we open our doors, we're doing what's best academically for students.
So, it sounds to me, if this is a fair summary, that we are not, if we were to follow that model, we would not simply be contracting with someone else to come in and just take over and do what you want to do. There would be some accountability back to Mr. Oliva and then kind of indirectly to us.
Yes. And there's going to be measurement markers in there, there's expectations. And when I say there's not one of these that's perfect, there's not a single one of these options on providing today that's perfect, okay? I think this gives us the most opportunity to do something different than we've ever done before, okay? Right now, if we consolidate, we're moving you down the road, unless you consolidate all with Barton, okay? But then we talked about some of the concerns around that. If we divide you up, we're working with other districts who are struggling, okay? And I would argue that, and I would let Mr. Guthrie say this for himself when he comes up, the Barton School District has, they're on a path of progress right now as well, but they have also had their struggles. So, it is a regional, we need a regional plan. But we got to figure out what's the best plan for this group of students, 306 kids for the fall.
Thank you. You've done a good job explaining it to me.
Thank you, Coach.
You got, Dr. Hill's approval, you've done a good job.
Listen, I'm good. When I get done, I'm going to turn around and bow again and these people back here are going to go crazy and it'll be good.
All right.
Stacy, I'd like to co-sign on that. You have done a really good job. I want to reflect back to comment you made earlier about the consolidation of Helena and Barton. If we were to do that, you mentioned that one of the proposals that was made was perhaps having a CTE program. My question would be if we do decide to go with the transformational contract, does that same CTE opportunity exist in that?
So, one of the promising things, I think, for this region is you do have superintendents who are talking together about opportunities that they could provide. I know you've been very involved in areas of the state around CTE. So, when we talk about a long-range plan and what that looks like, I think that's all part of the conversation. Each of our districts, even the ones that we work with very closely, they're all trying to improve those areas. But we would expect anyone that we do a transformation contract with to be part of the conversation and be at the table. So, we've got to leverage each other's resources in the region and creating pathways that we're sharing with each other and giving opportunities. And so, if this were to happen with a transformational contract, I would expect whoever we're working with to be working with the other area superintendents and be part of it.
You know, when I think of Arkansas Learns, you know, I can't help but think of, you know, obviously workforce, educational development. And fundamentally, I think that if we do do the contract, it's not an option, the CTE has to be part of it.
Thank you.
Also, good job, Stacy. I would like to see us come up with the option that maintains the buildings and the students on as they exist today and we employ our sources to fix it, get it back on track. You know, schools mean so much to the community. I'm a big supporter of that, as are other people.
Stacy, would it be appropriate to have, does anybody from Friendship here?
They are. However, I think we probably need to, because there's not a, there's not a, there's not a contract there. So, if the state board decides to direct us to do a transformational contract, that could be several different vendors or opportunities. And so, I think that would be something we have to bring back to you.
Okay. Just to ask them why they would be interested is premature, probably.
Okay.
That's fine. And I'll just echo, I think you've done a fantastic job, as always.
I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but just to check, this would be the first school, first district that would be part of this transformational contract, correct? There has not been another place that we've?
We'd be blazing a trail.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay. Again, we have area superintendents and you have the board of Marble Lane School District Administration here, if you have any questions for any of those. And then if not, and again, I don't know if you have public comments, so I don't know if you even want to give the opportunity for comment for some of those folks that are here.
I think it would probably be appropriate to let the, each district, if they had something they wanted to add to the conversation.
So, that would be up to them?
Okay. I'm going to let them see if anyone from Marble Lane Superintendent of Board had something you wanted to add to the conversation.
Mr. Williams, board president?
He's right here.
Did you want to make any comments? Are you okay? Okay.
Dr. Ray?
Let me again say thank you all for coming down today. It means a lot, not only to this community, but to the educators here on campus for you all to be here to make this huge decision. I'm going to reiterate what the board has stated throughout. Let me first of all say thank you to the board for their work. They work tirelessly. They do. They are the elected officials here. But the one thing that they have said on numerous occasions, it was that they wanted to keep the communities together. They've also said, you know, that they will do, you know, whatever it took in order for that to happen. And it sounds like we're possibly going in that direction. And that's what they wanted. And so, I'm going to, again, stand before you to say that, you know, with this new opportunity, I'd like for us to be just open-minded about giving them an opportunity to remain in place because now we're getting some options, we're getting the support and the help that I asked for nine months ago. And we do appreciate that. But again, I'd say because this is new and innovative, that this would be a time that we consider all options. And so, like I said, we do appreciate you all being here and the work that, again, I just wanted to recognize them for the work that they have put in over this past year. And for many of them, they've been on the board for many years. So, I just wanted to publicly say thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone from Barton that would like to add something to the conversation?
No.
No? Lee County?
No.
No? Helena, West Helena. Okay. So, all right. I didn't want to skip over y'all in case you had something you wanted to say. Okay. All right. So, public comment now? Is that okay with Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I think public comment's appropriate.
Okay. So, board, if you would like to enter into a phase of public comment, I will need a motion to accept public comment?
Move to accept public comment.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Wood to accept public comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, we will begin with public comment. I just want to let you know how public comment will go. We are going to ask, because we have several pages of public comment, we're going to ask that we limit ourselves to three minutes. I have been giving this device that I hope I can operate, but anyway, it's set for three minutes. When you start, it'll be green. When you have 30 seconds left, it'll be yellow. And when your three minutes is up, it'll turn red. So, that'll kind of give you a cue of where you're at. So, I think it came from a kindergarten classroom, so maybe we can operate it this morning. So, okay. All right. So, we are going to begin public comment. And again, I'm going to thank you for being here, community, whether you get to speak or you don't get to speak. I know your heart for Marble Lane and your heart for the students that are here and the future students that will be in these communities. And so, I want to thank you for being interested. And one thing I'm going to ask is don't let your interest and your outgoing for this community stop today. It has to continue on. And we, as a board, desire your interest. It has to continue on, and we, as a board, desire your input, and we desire and want you to be a part of this school and this school community. So we hope that you will continue to impact the students of this district as we go forward. All right, so our first one is Pastor Larry Johnson.
Well, I promise I'm going to be real short, because I've got to be back in Little Rock at 1:30. Greetings to all of you, to the Superintendent Dr. Ray, Marvel Lane School Board, to all other officials that's present. Honored to my Father in Heaven. Special thanks to the State Board of Education for your kindness and your consideration to drive all the way from Little Rock to be in this big city of Marvel, Arkansas. We thank you so much. As some of you may remember, I was at the meeting, the last meeting you had in Little Rock regarding Marvel, Elaine School District. As a graduate of then Marvel High School, my plea of consideration is still the same. While education is a major component to the equilibrium of life, at least we all consider holistically the decisions that Marvel and Elaine need from you. Please consider that the environment for a student must be conducive if he or she is to learn effectively. I'm sure it will be a major shift for all of our students, and especially for our juniors and seniors if they will have to move. It takes time to adapt and be accepted, whether it be Marvel, Elaine, standing alone, or third-party. There's a great need for our school to remain, for our students, and our community. I admit, I don't know the financial pieces of the school puzzle, but it is my hope that Marvel and Elaine School District receive the same attention and resources as all other schools. Again, yes, I think it's imperative that our students be educated academically. However, we cannot be one-dimensional in raising our children. We must consider that a child must be educated socially, physically, academically, spiritually, emotionally, economically, financially, and the list goes on. Our jails and prisons are full of educated men and women with high school degrees, college degrees, as well as business owners. I don't in no way want to undermine the importance of academics, but I do want to stress that academic is only one piece of the puzzle, and yes, we want our children to be well-educated. We must deal with the whole person if we want to produce a positive and productive person. Our children here in the Delta deal with countless obstacles that any city student would never face. It is my hope with the Learns Act now in place, that we're able to attract more licensed and qualified instructors to help us become all that we know we can be. We are so grateful for all of our current teachers, paraprofessionals, substitute teachers, and our volunteers. If time was in my favor, I could name several. Let me, I'm putting clothes on. If time was in my favor, I could name several doctors, nurses, lawyers, dentists, business owners, and so on that came right out of Marvel, Arkansas.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor.
I said that to say that we are more than capable of learning if we got the resources and everything we need.
All right, thank you, Pastor. I think your 30 minutes is up. I'm sorry. You get a quick close.
So in closing, I'm here today to plead on behalf of our students and community. If you give them everything they need to succeed, I promise you that they will be as successful as any student across the globe. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pastor. All right, remember, it's three minutes, and then that little red light goes off. Okay, all right. Kayla Gatsin. And if you know you're going to sign up for public comment, I think they've got an area up here. If you want to go ahead and move up here, it'll be just fine.
Hello.
Welcome.
Good morning. I want to thank the State Board of Education for allowing me to speak today. I also want to thank my Aunt Elaine Scafe for signing me up to speak, because I submitted comments and questions at one of the town hall meetings, but they were not addressed. So thank you both so much. My name is Kayla Gatsin. I am a junior at the Marvel Elaine High School. I rank number two in my class, and my friend Camilla ranks number one. I am an A.B. honor roll student, and I am currently waiting for my ACT results. I am looking at attending Arkansas State University, among other choices. I am a track athlete and a blue and gold Mustang. I've been at this school from pre-K up until now. It saddens my heart to think that my school might close, and this Saturday might be my last prom at my school. This is very emotional for all of the students. As you can see, everyone is not failing at this school. We have some good teachers who are certified, like Ms. Brown, Ms. Albert, Mr. Copeland, and Ms. Rogers. These teachers care about us and our education. We are being told that our school might be consolidated again or become a charter school. We do not want our school to be a charter school or be consolidated with another school. We have worn uniforms at this school, and we have been consolidated, and neither has helped us. We love the school that we have, we just need some help. Please help us and not just throw us away for someone else to deal with. Please give us the help we need to keep our school from closing. And if being a Marvel Mustang has taught me anything, it's taught me that Mustangs always stick together.
Thank you, Kayla.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I spoke like Pastor Johnson last month in Little Rock. So I'd like to say that, first of all, I'd like to say that I just see, it seems like it's just coming back around, because when I was a child here at school in sports, and when we would always go and play with Elaine, I would always get teased, because that's what my name is. So I just thought that that was interesting, that this is like coming full circle. But my name is Elaine Scafe. I'm a 1987 graduate of the Marvel High School, and I'm also a Board of Director of the Marvel Community Empowerment Corporation. And so we're just here today just to, I feel like, you know, oh, I'm sorry, did I do that? Okay. I feel that, you know, Commissioner Stacy has pretty much already said everything I need to say, because she's basically just totally changed my whole, whatever I was going to say today. So she's already said it, pretty much. But I did, I took some notes, and so I want to speak from some of these notes as we were speaking. So one of the things we talked about here today, we talked about the 40 miles. And it didn't appear to me, when we talked about the 40 miles, we didn't consider students who live on the Marvel side, who lives in Turner, okay? So I don't think we had an opportunity to take that into consideration as well. To get from Marvel to Turner, that's quite a bit away, okay? So I want to make certain that we're not just looking at it from the Elaine and the Snow Lake side, but we also need to look at it from the Marvel side, okay? So we have Turner, Trenton, Cedar Lane, Turkey Stracks, Turkey Scratch, Jones Ridge, okay? So we have all those places that those kids have to drive, ride the bus from just to even get to here. So let's make certain that we, you know, keep that into consideration as well. And also routes, you know? Have we looked at the routes? You know, when we just, you know, plug in, well, how far is it from here to here? Are we considering routes? Okay, so I want us to take that into consideration as well. I, in terms of, let's see here, I really appreciate the fact that we're not going to look just at one organization that has shown interest, but we're going to look at everybody, because that flyer that went out on the 11th, that caused a lot of concern to the community. It caused fear, you know? It caused anxiety, as if an opportunity had already been made, okay? So I'm glad that we got that cleared up. In terms of a, we are really into the idea of the Learns Act with the contract, the transformation school, and we really want...
Can you close for me? You're out of time, so can you close? Can you close for me?
I'm sorry, I didn't know. I'm sorry, I was just going on.
That's okay.
Okay, so just to close, I just want to say, find a way to say yes instead of saying no. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Andrew Bagley.
I'm glad you're operating that. Thank you.
Good morning, and I want to thank you for coming to Marvel today to hear from the community. Normally, since buying a newspaper, I don't take the extraordinary step of speaking. But over 20 years ago, as a young man, I was a teacher in Elaine, Arkansas. And it changed my life, it changed my perspective, and helped to soften some rough edges. And one of my former students is in the audience today, the Executive Director of the Rural Community Alliance, Candace Williams, and she succeeded in spite of me, but that's why I'm talking today. And I'd just like to cut to the chase. I'm not a preacher, I'm going to get this done in less than three minutes. I would like for you to accept the department's recommendation to do the transformational contract. I believe that the Learns Bill, those opportunities should be afforded to the students and the community, communities in Marvel and Elaine. This district has immense potential. It has good facilities, it has students that are capable, and I believe if you will take Dr. Smith's recommendation to put Dr. Oliva in charge, offer strong leadership, get a transformational contract in place where the superintendent would normally be, I believe this district can become a national showcase for why the Learns Bill was the right answer to the question, and finally got us outside of our silos, outside of our boxes, that have held us back as we have tried to solve the public education question in this region of the state. Consolidation is no longer practical. It's run its course. Geographically, it just doesn't make sense anymore, and I think you see that the legislature and the governor agreed with that, as House Bill 1504 worked its way through the legislature. 98 to nothing in the House, 31 to nothing in the Senate. Rare bipartisan moments, and everybody knew 1504 was a save Marvel bill. So I think the legislative intent is clear, I think the governor's support for Marvel Elaine is clear, and I think Learns gives us a huge opportunity to do something like we've never done before for the students of this region, and I would ask you to take Dr. Smith's recommendation.
Good morning.
My name is Pastor Michael Scafe of the New Light Christian Church, Indianapolis, Indiana. I'm a graduate of Marvel High School, class of 1982. I would just like to say that there is still one thing that we as a community and as a school that we must deal with, and that's what the Lord requires. Michael 6:8 tells us that God, he requires for us to do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly before God. Do justice, simply do what's right. Do what's right for this community, for this school, and for these kids. Secondly, love mercy. What that means, to show compassion and grace to those in need. This school is in need. This school is in need of certified teachers and someone to support them and mentor them to grow and develop. These kids are in need, and they are in need of a good education, they are in need of support from staff who truly cares about them. And this community is in need. What happens if the school closed, and then this community has nothing here? It will die. Lastly, walk humbly before God. What that means is this, you have power, but don't forget, God is all-powerful. And whatever you sow, is that what you shall reap. So we are asking you to help our community, help our school, help our kids to stay here, but give them the help. Give them the financial resources, give them help to stay here and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know if you can remember me, but I did make the trip to Little Rock, and I spoke to you there. I'm going to speak briefly, I'm not going to hold you long. I'm not a preacher. I'm a Christian. I believe in God. I'm not a politician, so I'm not going to try and act like I'm one. But I am married to a 20-year or more City Council Member of Marvel. He's a retired fireman. He is a retired School Resource Officer of this school. He's out there working now, but I am a parent. I am a parent. I have had three to have graduated from Marvel Elaine. They are a product of me. I work with my kids. As a parent, I feel like, I felt like I was accountable. I had that responsibility to educate my kids at home. I held that key. I'm still holding that key, because with your children, it's a never-ending job.
That's right.
Okay? The third one will graduate May 6th. I'm going to be dancing. That's a success for me. I have an M.B. honor roll student. She's not up here speaking today. That's fine. Everything that she's accomplished, it speaks for itself. What I say is that I'm praying that you all make the right decision for all of our kids. That is all I'm asking. As parents, I feel like I can speak for the parent in this community, Elaine, Marvel, whomever else may decide they want their children to come here. I feel like that we are going to be a success story here at Marvel Elaine.
Is it Rory Tate? Is it Rosie Tate? I'm sorry.
I should have known that, Ms. Tate, I'm sorry. I'm just teasing with you. I don't plan to be up here long at all.
Can you get closer to the microphone so we can hear you?
That was my daughter that just spoke.
Oh, you're very proud, Karen.
You know, she has my grandkids, and I've helped her along, all the way with her grandkids and my other grandkids, everybody's kids I've helped with, and the whole Phillips County, because I did my first five years down at Elaine. And then I went to Heldon of West Helena, and I did 34 years. I did my last 11 years here at Marvel. Marvel is where I've been living for, oh, I believe I counted up, 56 years now. So Marvel is my community. When I came from Helena, I came out here and did a whole one of my years that I was retired the first time, I did a whole one of those years here at Marvel. I stayed out here from 7:30 in the morning until 10 o'clock, 10:30. If I check, I might have, think about it, I might have stayed until a little bit later than that, helping to blend all of the material from Elaine, from Elaine that they brought down here to blend in with Marvel. I put in their accelerated reading system in both of their libraries. It took me a whole...
It took me a whole year to do that. I really have it in my heart for Elaine students and the community and Marvel. All of them love me, I believe. If they don't, they're... If they don't, they're making a fool out of me. So when I think about our children, and the reason I say I'm not gonna be long, I have a little song I want to sing for our kids, all of our kids in the community, Elaine and Marvel. And it goes like this. I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside. Give them a sense of pride to make it easier. Let the children's laughter remind us how we used to be. I decided long ago never to walk in anyone's shadow. If I fail, if I succeed, at least I live as I believe. No matter what they take from me, they can't take away my dignity. Because the greatest love of all is happening to me. I found the greatest love of all inside of me.
Thank you, Ms. Tate, thank you.
I'm singing this, I'm singing this for the kids because hopefully, we are going to stay at our school.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Again, I'll try to remind everyone, three minutes, because we've got several pages, and I'm not even through with the first page yet, so. All right, Mr. Wright, Dara Wright? Is it Danielle then? Okay, Danielle Wright, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, I am Danielle Wright. I'm a parent and employee and a concerned citizen. I would say for Marvel and Elaine. I'm active in both communities. And I work with several organizations. My concern is that the Helena, West Helena district is under the state microscope. This is the third time, I believe. I just wish that we could get that same opportunity. And it's just, I was a witness in 2006 when we first consolidated with Elaine, and it wasn't a pretty look. We closed several times, we never made it to lunch. It was just a disaster. And I know that these other districts that we are close to, our kids play ball, they communicate with those other kids. And I know it's gonna be even worse because the generation that we raising and teaching have changed. I also had a concern, but I see Jai did address that you guys didn't make a decision when friendship made the post on Facebook with the salary and all of that. Thanks for clearing that up. I was also looking at some of the same things they are doing prepping their kids for college. A lot of our kids not college material. Our kids don't have that opportunity for trades. In this area, agriculture is a big thing, like farming, driving big trucks. And we don't have that in the district to get them prepared for things like that. And I'm just asking, for whatever decision that you guys made, can we kinda incorporate some of those things to get them ready for the ones that's not college material? I've been working in the district since 2013. I kinda fill in gaps wherever help is needed. And I wanna speak from the community side. I've spoke with several communities, both Marvel and Elaine. We do not want charter. We wanna stay public, if that's an option. I don't know, I'm kinda stuck right now. But it's just, it's hard knowing that we don't know what the plans is. Just waking up every morning, we've been traumatized, we've been led wrong. So we just wish that if it's in you guys' hands, we just want the best for our kids. Thank you.
Christopher Neal?
This is my son, he's 10. He asked if he could speak, so he wrote down some notes the night before.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Christopher Neal, and I'm in the 5th grade class. I do not like the way that Dr. Luray treated my teacher, Ms. Fraser. My teacher, Ms. Fraser, quit last semester because of Dr. Luray. And it made my classmates and I feel sad. We'll never have the same teacher. I really was hurt when Dr. Luray was yelling at my momma in front of my class. I just want my teachers and my mom to be cheerfully. And can you please help us stay a public school, please?
Thank you, Christopher. I'm not sure the first name is Gage? Is it Jenny or Johnny? Okay, Johnny Gage? Some of the handwriting's are hard to read, so.
It's Johnny Gage. First of all, I'm a Marvel alumni, 1984. I'm gonna kinda do things a little different because everybody has pretty much said everything that I wanted to say. And so with that being said, I want to acknowledge our students here at Marvel Elaine School District. I want you to know that we are proud of you. You have done the best that you can with what you had to work with. And so we want to encourage our kids to keep doing the best that you can because the best is yet to come. And I want to also share with you that when we seen the House Bill 1504, there were some comments made that stuck to me. I believe with Sister Chesterfield, she made a comment about this area. And we're so grateful for her knowledge and her wisdom to understand that when we close these schools and we consolidate these children, the only thing we're doing is tearing down communities. And then I also heard Mr. McElroy, a comment that he made that stuck to me. He was talking, and he said, "I'm not too proud to be." He said, "Please give our children a chance." And that's what we're asking you today, to give our kids a chance. It feels like they're being done a different way because of the rural area that we live in. I wanna share with you that our kids have dreams. They have goals in their lives. And their goal is to come forward. But lately, we have been moving lateral. And every time I'm going lateral, I'm moving away from... To have a plan set in place. Whatever decision is being made, we just hope that it is the right decision that will take our kids forward instead of lateral. In other words, if we need certified teachers, I've been hearing that all along. If we need certified teachers, if that's the issue, why are we discussing going to other schools and other entities that have non-certified teachers? That is not what this district needs. And I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna sit down. It kinda reminds me of a football team. They may have a losing season for four or five years. They don't shut that team down. They don't move that team. What they do, they make some adjustments. They may fight a head coach. They may get rid of the defensive coordinator. They may do all of that. So we're asking you all to just help us put some pieces of the puzzle together. Thank you so much. May God bless you, may God keep you.
Thank you, Mr. Gage. We usually get our football analogies from Dr. Hill. But we appreciate you this morning. Natasha Brown or Bronn? Brown?
Good morning. To our local and state boards, our school administrators, and all that protocol requires that we address. I serve through AmeriCorps Vista at Boys, Girls, Adults Community Development Center here in Marvel, Arkansas. And also stand as a resident of Brinkley, Arkansas, which is a neighboring community. My purpose for being here is to ask you all to rescind your initial decision and consider the Learns Act. We know that the system that we had in place simply did not work. But what we want you all to know, that although we say that we are godly people, and we absolutely mean that, but we also understand God's Word, that faith without works is dead. So we understand that there is work that we need to do. We understand your position and your decision and your belief that it's not enough to just want a good school addition. We have to put some work in place to ensure that we have a successful school district. And we want you to know that it's not just about having a name on the building, but the pride of the community. And we want you to know, if the Learns Act is accepted, that we have protocol in place. We've refined our protocol. And we have such partnerships that will work to improve the CTE program, such as our partnership with PCC UA, such as our partnership with Arkansas Workforce, which is in Helena. And we work to refine those things, not to only work with individuals once they are out of high school, but we're looking at measures to bring those entities into the school district so we can work with the students as they are here in the school district so that they are productive citizens once they leave the school district. We also want you to know that we are working with state entities as Excel by 8. We also are looking at grade level, working with grade level reading and other entities. We also are working with our local co-op, which, I'm not sure what the flashing means. But we also work with our local co-op and things of that nature to ensure that we're taking advantage of the area's resources. So in closing, we know that, again, our current system failed completely. But we do want you to know that we also have community organizations in place and a system of retired teachers that will come in to support students that are falling behind, that may need such things as mediation, and also those new or inexperienced teachers that will also need support. So in closing, we thank you for your time. We thank you for your consideration. And we ask that you give us a chance to make it right. Thank you.
Thank you. We like to hear about the community willing to support, so thank you for that. Martin Rawls?
Good morning. Thank you. Can you hear me? There we go. I represent Marvel on the Quorum Court in Phillips County, and it's our honor to welcome y'all to one of our campuses. We appreciate you being here and taking your time to join us today. First of all, since this has started, the consolidation issues, and when the Learns Initiative passed, in my mind, in several of our minds, the first thing we thought about was the Learns Act and what it entitled with, the initiative hub and all of that stuff, the third-party initiatives. So I was thrilled to hear the recommendation this morning from Dr. Smith on, I don't know where she went, but on what she suggested about her presentation as I've heard from constituents from Turner to Trenton to Marvel, to everywhere in between, that the two most important things that the community wants is to keep the school here, to keep the kids together, and to not necessarily be a charter school. That's every, I have not heard, I don't think, a single thing against that. And every constituent, every phone call, every letter I've heard has been that statement. So when Dr. Smith said her recommendation, I'm pretty positive that would agree with the majority of the people in this community is what she said. And I was often told that, I moved back here after college, I've lived here all my life, and I was often told that the Delta has no chance. Nobody cares about the Delta. But I think that's contrary, not necessarily true. It was shown in the legislature that House Bill 1504 passed complete unanimous consent. Both Democrats, both Republicans. The governor supported the bill. I think the governor's Learnt Initiative is the perfect place to start in Marvel, Arkansas. Where better to start than have a national achievement story right here in the Delta? Thank you.
So I think a good follow-up to that will be Representative McElroy.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much for coming here today. And I hear you. You listen to the people, you really do. I wanna thank the staff. I wanna thank the Board of Education, because I know y'all are gonna do the right thing. I heard it today. And y'all give him a round of applause, ain't ya? I wanna thank our governor. The Learns Act is just what we needed at this time. We needed a chance here. And, you know, I just can't say thank you enough. And the community all stuck together. It brought our community together. It's, all in all, it was a wonderful journey. And I would just wanna say thank you. And I wanna finish up like Ms. Rosie. Ain't too proud to be, sweet darling.
Anika Whitfield? Dr. Whitfield? I think she's not in here, okay. Lacey Gilbert?
Thank you. First, I wanna say thank you so much for coming to us. That's awesome, and it goes a long way. I stand before you as a proud 1986 graduate of Elaine High School. And I don't know if anybody knows this, or Funeral Room might. We had a school in Snow Lake, and I attended Snow Lake School before I was bused because before the school consolidated, I was bused to Elaine. Forty-five years ago, so I'm telling my age. And then, 17 years ago approximately, my family, friends, cousins, nieces, nephews were consolidated and bused again. Now I'm watching potentially a third generation of my family, my friends, my nieces, my cousins, nephews. Third time. nephews, third time, bused again. Three generations. We are bused, weary. We are generationally traumatized, weary. We are economically weary. We are communities decimated by consolidation, weary. I'm tired. I'm tired. They said it's harsh for, someone mentioned in a meeting, that it's harsh when they talk about consolidation and busing the kids from Snow Lake. I was one of those children, and when they were here, I started crying, 'cause that wasn't harsh, that was cruel. There's a five-year-old right now in Crumrod. Just imagine a five-year-old on that bus, rural Rose, deer running, coming to Marvel, and somebody had the nerve to say you're gonna bust him fifty more miles? A five-year-old? That is cruel and unusual. I am asking you to give us a rest. We're weary and we're tired, and keep this community intact, keep the students intact, and give us an opportunity, this is your chance right now, for the Learns Act to be that example. When you think of our history and the third generation of students potentially being bused, you can show that the Learns Act, the potential it has, and the change that can happen in rural Arkansas, in the Delta, we're proud people here. And like Representative McElroy said, we're not too proud to beg, and we definitely are not too proud to put the work in, parents, teachers, and community to keep Marvel Elaine School open. Thank you.
Jerome Turner? Okay. Uh, Annie, um, Probie? I'm not sure what the last name is. Annie Probie, maybe? Pike, okay. I wasn't even close, was I? Yeah. Welcome, Ms. Pike.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Good morning, everybody. Whatever title you hold, you are God's child. Whatever title you hold, wherever you are from, I wish to thank you in behalf of the communities of Marvel and Elaine for what you've done, the hard work you've done, and I know that there have been many hours that you have spent, that we can't even calculate them, but you are here today. You're here to put Marvel back on the map. Once I thought Marvel had gone, all the lights are out, the stores are dark, talking about closing the school down? Oh, no. It can't be. You are a part of the school remaining open, and you are a part of giving our community a chance. You are a part of helping our children to grow further. Our boys have their pants down, our girls have their dresses too short, they look like they're going to a nudist party, or either going to a party to where everybody has diarrhea and their pants are down. I thought I would turn around and say it loud to the crowd. We need to take these children and try to teach them something, other than a laptop. Hello? Parents? You are supporting those children. They get their money from you to buy all this mess. Hello? I'm gonna tell it like it is. Marvel, you need to wake up. You need to, I have almost lost your community. It's on the verge of going across the river to the casinos and getting something, or getting a prize. They all lose their money, they're not paying for your house. Hello? Have nobody turned around today, telling you all, but I've turned around, and I want you to know that both of my feet are broken, and I'm gonna tell you in a few minutes how they got broken. But I want your parents to wake up. I want your children to wake up. You're talking about you going to another school, when you go to, oh, there, you're gonna get ruined too, if you don't wake up and put those laptops down and go to turn your lessons. That's your education. I don't wanna go to that school 'cause they got too many times. I, I have asked kids over and over, what is your time? Get on the computer. Hello? And when the lights go out, then you don't get no education? So, okay, let's just wake up. Let's wake up, let's get up, wake up, and try to, try to work with your sisters and brothers. We are all in this thing together. When Marvel dies, you go to die. Hello? So I'm saying to you, let's wake up, let's get up and do something about our lost community. I used to be proud that I belonged to Marvel, that I lived in Marvel, I had everything in Marvel, I had an estate in Marvel, have everything in Marvel, but it got to the place where I wish I had gone somewhere else. Now you have brought hope to us. Hello?
Thank you, Ms. Pike. Thank you so much, and I think-
For any time into this program to bring us out today, you will put us back on the map.
All right. Ms. Pike? Ms. Pike?
And I close by saying this, there is a destiny that makes us brothers.
All right.
None goes-
Thank, thank you, Ms. Pike, and, and crowd- I, I, I think we'll all say yes ma'am to Ms. Pike, won't we? We, we, yeah, so, we thank you, Ms. Pike, for, for, uh, uh, giving us some direction that sometimes we need to hear, don't we? All right, thank you. Uh, we, our, I think our last one is Charman Tate. I bet you're doing it, not me. I didn't want to mess it up. Welcome, Mr. Tate.
How are you all doing this afternoon?
Very good, thank you.
I appreciate, uh, you all letting me take a few minutes. I think I got, what, three minutes?
Yes, sir.
And I, I, uh, some of you may not know, but Marvel is my hometown. I grew up here, I'm still in and out of here on a regular basis, and I appreciate the fact that you all are here, looking at and listening to and evaluating this very important issue. I have a dream, Dr. King wasn't the only one that had a dream. I have a dream, and my dream is that you will vote to leave this school and Elaine open as public institutions. We need that. Please do not fall victim to any notion that it's not worth the effort. The students here are students of value, students of interest, and parents of interest. And my plea is that you will vote to leave these two schools open in a partnership or however you wanna do it, as public. And as we go forward, I have a dream that the parents and the students will take advantage of this opportunity and will work closely with you all and vice versa, and communicate to make it better as we go along. From day one, when you, when you go on the playing field, typically the first play is not gonna be a touchdown, but you will move the ball down the field. These people with your support and your understanding will move the ball down the field, and my dream is that as that happens, parents will become more involved, more supportive, and communicate not only with you all, but communicate in a different fashion with those students that are here, and making sure that the students are paying attention to what they need to do and should be focused on in the classrooms. So, thank you very much. Please, anyone coming before you, elected or otherwise, suggesting that this school and Elaine be closed, I hope you would gracefully, but consistently, march them out the door. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Stacy, it's just a second, back going for a minute. Okay, okay, all right. Sometimes we need to hear plain speaking, don't we? So, so that was, I, I appreciate your comments, I appreciate the community's support, and I assure you that, that we hear what, what you're saying today. So, um, Ms. Smith, you have anything else that you would like to add, or?
Um, no, um, I would encourage the board to go ahead and, and maybe at least make the consideration whether or not you're going to rescind the vote or stay as is. If you are gonna go with the consolidation, then I would not make any recommendation for any type of action today, because we need to figure out how the House, House Bill 1504 impacts.
Sure.
Um, and make sure we have the distance pieces correct. Um, if you're deciding to go with the transformational contract, um, then you would need to rescind the votes.
Okay. So, so right now, board, we are, uh, uh, the, the, I think the two major decisions that we, are the major decision that we have to make right now, is do we want to go with a consolidation, uh, uh, option, or do we want to go with a, uh, transformational option? Okay? Because each one of those will, uh, send us in different directions, okay? So that would be our first, um, decision to make, I think, as a board, is which direction as a board do we want to go? So, um, I'm open to discussion, or, um, I don't know that we would need a motion to go for a transformational or consolidation. I think that, that direction would, would, would direct what our motion would be after that, wouldn't it?
Yeah. And so, Ms. Newton, um, we have provided for you a recommendation of what the department, um, would recommend, and we would recommend that you rescind your previous vote on December 8th, um, and then follow up with granting the waiver, and that would be doing a transformational contract. So you could do a motion for that or against that, and if you do it against it, then we stay with the consolidation.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, is the board clear on that then? Mr. Wood, did you have comment, or?
I'm sorry?
I was just gonna respond to your last request for board direction. I would like to set it in motion toward the transformational contract.
Do we, do we, are we, is discussion appropriate right now for a second, or?
I, I think we haven't made a motion, so-
Okay.
So discussion is okay.
Okay. So I, in, in listening and appreciate everyone who's speaking today, I think there's just a lot of, there's just a lot that still is to be determined. And at the base, um, Stacy, as we're looking at this, when we're thinking about going down the route of transformation, the department, we are then going, we would direct you all to search out a third-party entity to, to work in this school district. That third-party entity, if it was a charter school, this would not operate as a charter school, meaning that the way a charter operates in our state is any student from any boundary can come to it, and they don't get property tax. This would be a school that receives property tax and students in these boundaries come from. Is that correct?
Correct, 'cause they would still have a board that would be overseeing that and making those approvals.
Okay, by that. When, just really quickly, I, looking at the data, when I was pulling up things last night, this district receives one of the highest amounts of money per student in the state. It's over sixteen thousand dollars per kid, but it's one of the smallest districts in the state. So when you're looking at Benton, who's receiving eight thousand per kid, you're receiving double that per student, but it's so small. Are we financially setting up this transformation? You know, do we feel comfortable on, in that aspect as we're moving forward?
So, at, at one point, when the district was in fiscal distress, there were concerns of that, so they have worked, they have worked on that element of it. Um, Dr. Saunders, is there anything financially at this point that you're, you're prepared to make comment on?
No.
Okay. I mean, I-
Yeah, I mean-
I mean, it would be something we would continue to have to watch, and if we did a transformation contract, we'd have to make sure the budget piece was there, and we'd have to talk about all those elements. Those, those are key pieces we would have to figure out. If the, so today, I'd also recommend, if, if we move this path, that the state assumes authority. If we don't find a transformational contract that we feel comfortable with, the state will have assumed authority and be responsible for the school district. Um, and, and, you know, there would be lots of things and steps that we'd have to do there. Ideally, we would like to use the transformational contract and bring in additional resources and support, but we're gonna try to make sure that whatever we do is in the best interest of the students who are gonna suffer for class.
Thank you. I, I mean, looking at that, we are receiving, I mean, the district is receiving the highest amount per student of money and the lowest performance in the state, and every kid can learn. So we need, we have to act, and I hear it today, with urgency, that we are changing what's going on, so that students are learning at their highest potential. That was my-
Anyone over here have a comment that you would like to add? Okay. Mr. Wood, I think you had a motion that you wanted to make.
I move that we rescind our vote of December 8th, 2022, in which we denied the petition of the Marvel Elaine School District for a minimum school district size waiver.
All right. Yeah, we have a motion by Mr. Wood to rescind the vote, and we have a second by Dr. Hill. All in favor? Any opposed?
I'm gonna just take a moment to explain the next step for the audience. The next recommendation would be, is to, now you would need to grant them the minimum school district waiver that you just rescinded, so that would be the next recommendation.
Okay. And do we have someone who wants to make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant that school waiver back.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Henderson and a second by Mr. Sutton, uh, that we grant the petition filed by the Marvel Elaine School District on November 18th, 2022, for a minimum school si- school district size waiver. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
So, an additional recommendation that the department would make to the state board is to assume authority over the Marvel Elaine School District, currently classified in Level 5. And as far as the Marvel, uh, keeping them in an advisory capacity for the remainder of the school year.
All right. I move that the state board assume authority over the Marvel Elaine School District, which is currently classified as in need of Level 5 intensive support under the Arkansas Educational Support and Accountability Act. I move that the state board remove all powers of the district's board of directors, but allow the board of directors to operate under the direction and approval of the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education in an advisory capacity through the end of the year, and that the state board direct the commissioner to assume authority over the district's board of directors as may be necessary to operate in the public school district. district's Board of Directors as may be necessary to operate in the public school district.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Woods, and we have, yeah, okay, and we have a second by Mr. Sutton.
As a former local school board member, I just want to commend the local school board for all of the work you have done. There is, there is a lot of unappreciated work that goes into being a school board member, and so, thank you all. Even though this, these might be hard words to hear, you're very much appreciated for the work you've tried to do for this community. I am excited for the direction we're going and the hope that it gives the community, but this is certainly by no means to be taken as an insult to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, for that. That was perfectly said. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
And the final recommendation that we would ask of the state board is to direct the Commissioner of Education to commence discussions, to go in, to enter into a transformational contract that the Arkansas Learns provides.
I move that we direct the Commissioner of Education to commence discussions with entities authorized under Act 237 of 2023, Section 14, to explore entering into a contract for school transformation for Marble Elaine Elementary School and Marble Elaine High School.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Woods and a second by Mr. Wood, and, and so, any discussion?
Okay, is it appropriate to ask a question? Okay, what, in doing this, we're not putting a date on anything, is that correct?
No, there's no date.
Okay. And so, are you all, is it going to be our board to make that final approval, or is that Secretary Aliev's final?
We would bring the contract back to you and do a proposal to you. So, our hope would be to quickly be able to try to turn something around, but until we're comfortable with a contract, we won't bring you something. If we can bring you something in two weeks, we will, if it's next month, or if it's the month after that.
Okay, and we'll be in contact with the district and the community as far as what's, what's that looking like along the way?
At this point, the district is under state authority, so yes.
Okay.
I wanted to say one thing to also honor the co-ops that have put in a tremendous amount of work to come, to come and support this school district. I'm, I'm really overwhelmed with gratitude for them. I'm very, very impressed by their willingness to step up and come in and, and almost rescue a school district that needed so much support. Today, you said it, it's Mina and who?
It's DeQueen Mina and some specialist from Guy Fenter.
Mina and DeQueen, and if you don't know, that's the far western side of Arkansas that is coming to the far eastern side of Arkansas to support education, so I'm very thankful for, for all the work that they do as, as we move forward in this new, new path.
Thank you for acknowledging them, and I, I wanna shout out to my OCSS team that is boots on the ground here every day, so.
All right. So, so we have a motion, and we do have a second. Any more discussion? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
I, I was just gonna let Ms. Newton know that I got everybody's name down that went over three minutes, and I'm gonna hold them over here when people go to lunch, okay? And we're gonna have a lesson.
Chair, if I could indulge the board and the community in just first echo some of the sentiments that we've heard here today. We, we, we have a community that understands the value of a neighborhood school, and, and I can tell you, as somebody that's been new to this conversation, this community, for at least the last three board meetings that I've been to, drove over 100 miles to Little Rock to make sure they were sitting in the audience to hear the discussion about the future of their district. And when we left the last state board meeting, I remember walking away saying, "This community told us we will do whatever it takes to save our school, and we, and we wanna hold you accountable to that." And it, it was at that time that we recently had some of Governor Sanders' vision on how we can save schools, how we can invest in neighborhood public schools, especially our, and primarily, our small and rural schools with the signing of the Learns Bill. And I went back to the staff, Stacy and team, commend them, said, "How do we use the flexibility we have now to do something that this state has never seen? We have leadership from a governor that's told us as a board to do what we can to make sure we're putting the pieces in place that honors the commitments that we have made to the communities by making sure that every student has an opportunity to be successful in life." And we were doing that, and we did that today, so I, I wanna applaud Governor Sanders' leadership for the vision in, in getting this legislature, legislation across the line. I, I wanna applaud this board for having the faith in, in our agency and in the community and the testimony that we've heard here today on how we can be innovative in our approaches to supporting teaching and learning. I wanna thank Dr. Ray and, and the board and, and, and everybody that's been having conversations around what does the vision for this community look like, and I think we all agree the vision starts with having high-quality education, and when we can build that, we're gonna continue to see this region of the state thrive and succeed. So, thank you for your faith today. I, I wanna assure this community to let them know that we are fully invested and we are fully committed to rolling up our sleeves and doing whatever it takes to make this community thrive, so thank you.
All right. I think we've been sitting for a while, so how about let's take a break for some lunch? Does that sound good? All right, so 1:30, 1:45, which one?
1:45.
1:45, okay. All right, 1:45.
People are gonna wanna call.
Yeah.[1040.73]
Dan always gives me a thumbs up when he's ready, so you can give me a thumbs up when you're ready.
There's a big ask, but I think there's a lot of value.
We appreciate it very much, so thank you for doing that. I think it was the right thing to do for the community.
Well, I think it's a great turnout, a lot of good conversation, a lot of good dialogue. We've got a good result, so thank you. All right, you should be good to go.
All right.
So what were the goals? So again, we have a three-pronged approach for standards revisions. We wanted to ensure that we had strength in our standards, which is really just about ensuring that we have logical learning progression, K-12. We wanted to make sure that we had the essential knowledge and content and skills represented in our standards. And that we also took the time to clarify the standards. Make sure that our expectations were clear. And you will see as we talk a little bit more and go a little bit deeper how that happened. So just being really conscientious around what it is that our students need to know and be able to do. And a lot of that happened through simplification of language. Making the language as friendly, parent-friendly, student-friendly as possible. And so that our teachers really have a good understanding of what is the expectation in teaching and learning. And then our third thing is to really just provide enough support for our teachers to have the explanatory front matter that we need and to also have an appendix of resources that will be of value to teachers as they are studying the standards and preparing and doing the intellectual prep to teach. All right, so this is just a view of our timeline for revisions. As you see, it spans across 2022 and 2023. And there you see from DESI prepping from January to May, getting ready for teacher teams to come in in the summer, in June and July, and then taking those recommendations in the work of the committees back to DESI for formatting, for reading, and to make sure that we could put together a document. We also had, in that process, you see expert feedback, public feedback. And we did bring it to the board at some point, but we were charged by our secretary to go back and to take a deeper look. We're glad we did that. We think we have a great set of standards to bring before you today. Major changes that happened from the summer of 2022 to when we first presented them to the board, and then you'll see significant changes from that point. So took a really good look at the standards, and we think we have a body that will be acceptable here today. And then we're here before you today, and we will work, continue to work, and provide professional learning this summer and throughout the next year, and really focus on support around implementation. So a long journey. We're glad to be here today. All right, so who contributed? This was definitely an educator-driven process. We had, as you see there, lots of stakeholder participation, from Arkansas teachers to our community members, national and state experts, our leadership at DESI in ADE. We had higher ed contributions, our DESI specialists, and our regional specialists. And just over to the side, you see their chart that sort of shows you some numbers. So in terms of our Arkansas teachers, we had 187 teachers. I'm sure there were a lot more because just along the way, we would always ask for feedback. But 187 teachers who actually convened at different times, whether that was in the summer or whether that was in a session after school to contribute to the standards, the writing and the review of the standards. Also, before we do standards, before we ever send them out in the summer, prior to that, we always sent out a survey. So what you see there is, so pre the revision committee getting together in the summer, we sent out a survey for all teachers to be able to have some input. And we had lots of responses there. You see, we had 1,971 responses. And that's across math and literacy, because again, we send them both out at the same time. Lots of feedback at every grade level. We like to ensure that we're getting feedback, and if not, we continue to send it out for feedback at every grade level. And then, as you saw on our journey, we brought them to the board, and then we went back and took a different look. And then we revised the standards and put them out again for public comment. But that's where you see the 428. It was after we had gone back and taken a second look, we also sent them out through our commissioners memo for public comment. And we had 428 stakeholders to provide feedback, and we made some changes again from that feedback. And it's still open today, so we watch them roll in every day if something comes up. And we want to make sure that we have the best set of standards, and we're making all considerations around this work. And we had five national and state experts. This was after we had taken a second look. We engaged in experts again, along with our stakeholders here in the state of Arkansas. And so, again, 19 higher ed, national and state experts. This was prior to us taking a second look. And then we have our DESI specialists who have worked really hard to pull all of this together. There's about 21 of them on the home front who have burned the oil night and day, literally, weekends, to provide you with standards in about a three-month period. Taking that second look that would take years. So we appreciate them. They used all of the time that they had and dedicated it towards this work. And then, so in terms of our ESC regional specialists, we had 100 specialists, over 100 specialists who participated and supported this work. So lots of educators. This was definitely an educator-driven process. All right, so we're going to start with math, and Kisa's going to help me with this in just a moment. But in thinking about math, this is just a good view of the state. And when you think about that committee of 37 math educators who started this work in 2022, this was the representation across the state. So it's really important to have all of our regions represented so that we can really hear what are the concerns, what are the recommendations from across the state. So this is just a good view for you to see. Also, ELA, this is just another picture of the representation of 78 ELA educators that came across the five regions to convene in that original summer. All right, so I'm going to bring Amy Count up. She's our Director of Curriculum Projects. She spent considerable time making sure that all of the things that needed to get done, you know, that sort of day-to-day task. She was in charge of that, like making sure we had it in the documents correctly, making sure the teams were meeting. She probably knows every detail of what happened during the revisions. But she's going to come to you and talk to you about the change of the organization of the standards.
Hi, Amy Count is Director of Curriculum Projects. So the organization of the standards is now the same for both math and ELA. Prior, they were a little bit different. So that's really going to help with, we hope, with our elementary teachers who have to be responsible for multiple sets of standards. That organization system is pretty consistent now with terminology. And they are now organized in strands, components, and then the standards. And I'm going to show you a couple of examples in just a second. That organizational structure is also mimicked here in the new nomenclature that's been developed. As you can see, it starts with the grade level, and then it moves into the strand, and then the actual standard number. For ELA, they went one more level deep and actually have the component represented there as well. So that's the new nomenclature for the standards. Again, that's consistent for math and ELA, pretty similar. So these next couple of slides just are examples of how this organization has changed. You're going to see on the left the 2016 version, and on the right, the proposed 2023 organization. And what I hope you notice is how the language has been simplified. It just seems a little bit cleaner for our teachers to access, and also our community members, our parents as well. So what you see here is a math kindergarten example. And then you have an eighth-grade example for math. And then we move on to ELA for kindergarten. And then we have an eighth-grade ELA. So now I'm going to switch it back to Dr. Pride.
Yeah, so I hope what you saw in that is that there was a dramatic change from 2016 to 2022 to now 2023. So lots of work and thought put into the organization, which is really impactful when you're planning and prepping for learning. So let's get to the good part. What are the changes that we see in common around math and ELA? I think we've said probably four times already that the standards were written in a parent-friendly language. And so, as you know, we're, yeah, there's nothing wrong with a good clap for that. So really reducing unnecessary jargon. You know, we all in our professions like to use our jargon. And we will still do that sometimes with teachers. But we wanted to make sure that these standards were accessible for everyone, no matter who the stakeholder was reading the standards. All right, and then the other thing we see in common across math and ELA is that we really had a really strong focus around grade level, learning progressions, showing how learning changes and builds over time, wanting to increase the precision in the standards by eliminating any redundancy that we might see, so that we're clear about what the expectation is at grade level. Also, I think just really focusing on, like, are there any standards that need to be eliminated or moved because they may have been redundant or unnecessary? So we did a lot of that with our teacher teams and our experts. And so you will see dramatic differences if you sit the standards beside each other from the 2016 version to now. And then again, as Amy just talked about, we simplified the organization and structure of the nomenclature. And so the physical appearance is very similar across both math and ELA, which makes it easier for teachers to really talk across bodies of standards. And again, here's a look. You saw the nomenclature earlier. This is an actual look at the standards. So 2016 on the left for ELA. And then remember, in 2022, remember, we brought them to the board, and this is what they looked like. So slightly different. Here is math in 2016 and math in 2022, again, a slightly different look. But after that second look, you'll see they look totally different. And so this is what they look like in current form. Very similar. This is kindergarten ELA and kindergarten mathematics. Very similar, though different in content. And here's an eighth-grade example. On the left side, you see eighth-grade ELA and eighth-grade math standards. So no matter the level, you will see similarities around the physical appearance of the standards. All right, so I know everybody loves math, so we're going to talk about the changes around math. And the way we structured this, so just to visually give you some cues, those things in black are the things you will see across K-12 that were consistent across the K-12 standards. So the organization again, technical language simplified to be parent and student-friendly. Reduction of verbs, just to provide clarity. So when you have a bunch of verbs in a standard, sometimes you say, wait a minute. Which verb am I supposed to do, and when am I supposed to do it? Which one comes in what order? So we want to be really clear, so you'll see them, you'll see standards be a little bit more clear, a lot more concise than they were before. Not a change in the rigor of the verb, but a reduction sometimes in having three or four verbs in a standard, which can be confusing to teachers to say, which of these should students master and in what order? And, you know, then how much time do I have to do that? So we've really tried to work there. And again, conceptual and procedural knowledge, and Kisa's a better expert than I am, really clarified how that looks across the body of standards, and really reflecting a balance in the approach, and that students have to be able to do both. So you will see those things in black to be consistent across K-12. And I'm going to bring Kisa Mormon up. She is our fearless leader of mathematics across the state of Arkansas. She's going to talk to you across K-12 about those things that were significant in the standards revision.
Thank you, Dr. Pride. Again, my name is Kisa Mormon. I am the K-12 Math Program Manager. So Dr. Pride has already kind of explained some of the common things in black. And then I'm going to go a little bit deeper around the K-5 first content, and then I'll move on to 6, 8, Algebra I and Geometry. So we have a counting component for K-2, which we had counting at first, but however, it was scattered out in multiple domains. And so now you'll start seeing counting for the counting component. And that's for the logical progression, so teachers can identify exactly where they need to fall in that progression. And then the basic fact fluency is also incorporated in it, and you'll see in some grade level. And you'll see in some grade levels that you'll see when it needs to be mastered. I think in our previous standards, we didn't articulate that as clearly. But in these standards, we have a end. And when we say end, I want you to be mindful that I always tell people end means it's probably the last time that they can get it in tier one. It's not the end forever. So you might have to go back and help them get that. But this is the last opportunity that student gets to see that material in tier one instruction, okay? And then we also combined our geometry and measurement standards as well just because we had measurement and data earlier. And as we all know, as we think forward in our forward-thinking, that data is very important. Data science is coming along and all of that is very important to us. So we have data analysis in every component and in every strand and every grade. And it will be by itself. So geometry and measurement is put together for that reason. So then I'm going to talk to you about 6, 8, and then Algebra I and Geometry as well. So Dr. Pride again has shared everything in black. And I'm just going to give you just a second to look at what she said around those things around in the black font. And so then, what are we talking about in 6, 8? And so we also have geometry and measurement in 6, 8 as well. So it continues with the K-5 to a 6, 8 progression. And so that wasn't on there. But 6, 8 also has a geometry and measurement, and they also have a data analysis. So in addition to that, and when we talk about our high school courses, we have standards that are grouped by majors. Previously in our standards, they were all under, let's say, what you were to do instead of what type of function, like, am I working with something specifically and what am I working? So they had to go through their document and find where it failed. And so now they can put their eye on exactly that function and what am I supposed to do around that function? And then math terms are clarified. So the high school also looked at 6, 8 very closely to make sure that we're using common language. We do realize that math is a language that I love. And so therefore, we want to make sure that our math terms go across and making sure that all teachers understand that 6, 8, as well as Algebra I and Geometry, should have a connection. And if we're using different verbiage, then we need to address that. And then the last, but not least, is Algebra I and Algebra II is uncoupled. So in previous standards, we had shared standards is what we called them. And a lot of our Algebra I teachers, when we read the survey, said, I do not know. I'm not sure where I'm to stop the learning. And so therefore, we said, hey, we're going to either put it in Algebra I or we're going to put it in Algebra II. So with these new ones, you will see them uncoupled. And it's very clear where the learning will stop and where they need to begin and start. And so I'm going to pass it back to Dr..
We'll stop there. Any questions about math? Sorry, stay up there a little bit because you got to answer math questions. Any questions about math? Yes.
I do, but I don't want to be the one to go first. Does this work? Okay. Thank you. I spent one year as a math interventionist, so I'm really edging. No, I'm just kidding. No, I'm not. But what is exciting to me is that this is very concise. You know, I'm looking at, if I'm a kindergarten teacher, I can see my standards on two pages. And that is not to be lowering the standards that they should be teaching less, but it's saying, okay, I can wrap my mind around what my student needs to know at the end of the year. And here are my two pages and let's break it apart from there. That being said, I've heard a lot over the past few years of a lot of districts doing the work of them having to pull out the main standards, what's most important, and sort of mapping from there. And I'm sure that's, I think that's really great work for a lot of it. But it seems like a lot of time is spent planning when that time maybe could be spent doing interventions and digging deeper. Do you feel like these standards are situating districts and teachers better so they can more quickly figure out, you know, progression? And I know that ties into curriculum too, but progression of standards and how that goes?
Yeah, you have answered part of it. And you may have some things to say. Yeah, so thank you for noticing the conciseness in the standards. The team worked really hard on that. But I would say these standards will provide teams with more time for intellectual prep, not necessarily just the planning piece where they have to break down the standard and do a lot of unwrapping. So I think a lot of time will be saved on the unwrapping piece, which is where you sometimes see where you can get belabored in that. But this will be clear and they can spend more time with the intellectual prep, which will jump them right into the things that you're talking about, really having a strong core. That was the focus of the standards. But then also being able to see, how do I move my core instruction over into small groups that point in time, point in time support around tier-two interventions? And then really clearly seeing if students need some tier-three support.
And so. Am I on? Yeah, so I agree too. So you're saying from interventionist hat, so I wear many a hat. You're absolutely right. So hopefully you can see a learning progression, not saying we are changing the rig. Even if you're in core instruction, which is your tier-one or intervention progression.
Yes, I don't know if that fully answered your question, but I think also where we will see that teachers will save some time is because we're getting a new assessment, we'll also be able to support them around essential pieces around our blueprint for assessment. So that will also be a nice complement to having a new set of standards. And I think it will save them lots of time.
I think, and you know, having been in this space for the past 10 years, there's been a lot of time devoted to the conversation around computational math versus conceptual and in concrete and all that. Where, what does this look like now? I was joking, like, what is my kid's homework going to look like? No, no, no. But like, where are we with that? And what are these standards, how do these standards address that balance?
Absolutely. So I can't answer the homework question part, but I definitely can talk about conceptual and procedural understanding. So there should definitely be a balance between the two. And so, and when you're reading the standards, I think a lot of times because it's a new look that the verb is in front, and so we tend to jump straight to the verb. Dr. Pride gave us the challenge and Oliva gave us the challenge as well is what is the essence of the standard? What is the math that needs to be brought forward? And so the math is still there. And so there's a balance between the two. And so when I say balance, you'll see real world still interwoven throughout our standards. And I want you just to understand that is the opportunity for you to model and get conceptual understanding still in and make it real world and make sense of the mathematics that's being presented in front of you. But then there's also the opportunity to notice what skills that they will need to be able to achieve that as well.
I'll say, Kisa and I had this conversation, actually, we were on a plane together. We were coming back and we had this conversation about how we can really simplify teachers really understanding, how do you move from conceptual to concrete or the other way around when necessary? And so the team really has a good plan around summer training to really show how the standards don't neglect either one, but they complement one another.
If I could, I'll add in to that. And these are the real experts, so I always get nervous when I have to talk to them about teaching and learning. But I think, Dr. Moore, to your point, with some of the frustration that parents have felt, especially in the primary space with supporting their children with homework, is because the homework that gets sent home focuses so much on the strategies associated with conceptual math. And the strategies may be new to parents who don't know how to implement them. And that was because the former versions of the standards included strategies with the standards. So that got interpreted as to what should be taught and measured. And this new focus on the standards is about that balance between procedural and conceptual fluency. But it's about making sure that students have access to multiple strategies and they can use the strategy that works best for them. And not whether or not we're going to assess the student on their ability to apply a strategy, but whether or not they can solve the problems. And I want to make sure we're clear that conceptual math is not a bad thing. We need to understand how the world works and how numeracy is a part of it. But if that level of automaticity that you want to see around math facts, especially in early grades, isn't a heavy focus, then that's going to hold students back from being able to apply those mental math strategies into higher levels of math. So if you don't know your multiplication tables in third grade, it's really hard for you to master factoring in pre-algebra because you're using too much cognitive load trying to determine your basic math facts than how you applied those concepts. So focusing a little bit less on specific strategy implementation is going to be where you see a little bit different in the expectation that we set for our classrooms.
All right, thank you.
That's awesome. And awesome, and I know y'all spent a lot of time working and thinking on that. My last question right now is when y'all are going through public comment, especially the second round of it, what was the most of that comments about? And did that bring about any changes as y'all are looking at things?
So I'll let you share. I'm going to brag that I looked at all the good ones, right? Like, I was like, okay, lots of good feedback on clarity and that these are easier to read. And I feel like I know sort of what you said, Dr. Moore. I feel like I know what students are supposed to learn. But Kisa might talk a little bit more about the detail of math.
Absolutely. So she's correct on a lot of it was thankful for the clarity, but a lot of it was still around the support document that we'll put out around to what level on some questions do we need? But overall, it was more around like providing them additional support. They're used to the teacher notes that were always there earlier, the examples that were always there earlier. And so we'll have a support document that can answer some of them. But they were very general overall, just pretty much saying like, hey, essential standards, they ask questions about stuff like that, but that doesn't necessarily have to deal with us selecting those. So therefore, a lot of it was just around making sure that they understood a specific standard or needing a little bit more support around that.
Thank you.
Any other question? I had one question on, I guess, probably more the algebra and the geometry. Have you done a curriculum map to see in a classroom? Is it doable as far as in a school year with a classroom of ever how many students? Is it doable to make it through the standards?
Yeah, so a good question. So what we want to be mindful is that it will be doable if you pair things up. If you teach in isolation, it's not doable. But you're going to have to dig into your standards and decide where do things intertwine? And where can I connect things, which is what we should be doing in mathematics, not teaching in silos, then I think it would be doable. And it does seem a lot longer for algebra and geometry because previously we had like 30,000 verbs under one component, and it has been broken up. So there's still going to have to be some work around talking about, hey, what can I pair up to make sure that I am not teaching things in silos, but teaching them in connections? And we know when connections are together, then it gives us deeper understanding.
But I guess that's my concern or not really a concern, but just making sure that we don't go back to, I have a checklist and I want to get through all of these standards. And I'm making it through, but I'm not worried about whether my kids are actually learning the concept. I don't want it, you know, the old way of saying it was a mile wide and inch deep. You know, we don't want that. We want to make sure the kids are getting that understanding. And, you know, and I understand a lot of these do pair up and work well together. But I just want to make sure that we don't get back to, you know, I'm going to check them off and I covered it and now I'm going on. You know, we've got to think about the kids and making sure that they are learning the concepts that they are going to need for higher-level mathematics.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Newton. And I definitely agree with you, we don't want the checklist. And one of the things that we'll work on with the summer training is how do you use your high-quality instructional materials to help you around units of study? That's going to be key. Again, just making sure that you know how those standards should be grouped so that you can teach them within a year span. And also using good assessments to know what your students really need will be a part of that piece. And those are embedded deeply into their high-quality instructional materials. And so Kisa has done a good job designing training for this summer. So we'll hit that really hard and make sure that we're supporting our teachers around that part.
So have you already looked at materials that were, again, I'm thinking algebra and geometry, but have you already looked at materials that are high-quality that are combining these concepts in a way that teachers will feel comfortable being able to make it through the standards, but it'll also be where the students will be learning at high levels? Have you looked at materials, specifically at materials?
Yes, so we do have a list for high-quality instructional materials where they can select which ones they should use. And then there, they already have them paired for them. So they're still going to have to do some work. But yes, there is a list where schools should look at to select possibly which one they choose for high-quality instructional materials. And then in the work that they're going to have to do, the thinking around that is, hey, is it paired together? And then that's where I can say yes or no. So yes, there are some.
So I guess what I'm asking, you've coordinated these standards to those high-quality materials?
I was going to say, you know, we, so those pieces that we have, and I know you know about our Arkansas reports page, it's a resource. And of course, for math, that's their choice to use it. But in that, there are criteria around what those materials must have. And so when she says there's a list, that's that resource there available. And we've had this conversation about whether or not those standards that we have now, would high-quality instructional materials still support these standards? And the answer is yes.
Okay, that's my question.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, as far as have we reviewed curriculum materials that are out there with these new set of standards? No.
Okay.
Okay, we haven't had time to do that. They have been reviewing high-quality instructional materials that are used in an algebra course. What we want to be really clear in our classrooms in Arkansas is that we're really clear on what we expect to be taught in algebra, geometry, all of our math classes across the state. The next phase is they're going through and putting their resource documents together is the step of, okay, let's go back to our high-quality instructional materials. Let's look at our standards and see where are there gaps?
Okay.
Where are there places to do supplemental resources? And this is where our educational cooperatives really come in. And they will look at their area schools and see what materials are being adopted so that we can do training specifically around those materials in the classrooms aligned with our standards. So we're going to get there.
Are districts adopting materials this fall or is it up to the individual district?
It's a continuous process that they're adopting. So we do have some districts who have adopted in the last two years. We've had some districts who are adopting in the fall. If you look at the actual content itself of what's in our algebra standards or even in our math standards, it's generally the same. Okay? What we're being really clear about is what are we assessing on our state exam? And where are we putting the emphasis in Arkansas? And so as teachers are selecting the materials or utilizing the materials, they're going to make sure that those key standards are going to be taught in classes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think one comment I want to make is these standards have made a lot of algebra and geometry teachers very happy. So thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, so here is the time that we are standing for you.
Just a second, we've got one more question. So there's a lot of other high school math courses as well. When do those undergo revisions?
The team is working on those. We're hopeful to come in the next few months. It just depends on.
Are they all, do they all have to be on the same cycle? Or are they all, is everything on a seven-year cycle for every subject?
Yeah, yeah. So what we're bringing before you now is aligned with what's going to be assessed for our assessments. The rest of them, they've revised them, but they're still working on them with some teacher teams. But they're coming. But we've done those that are going to be aligned with the assessment.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any other questions on standards so far? Okay, Dr. Pride, go ahead.
All right, all right. So we're standing in front of you for consideration of the math standards. We respectfully submit those to the State Board of Education for approval. Again, groups of educators representative of the state revise the standards for grades K-8, Algebra I, and Geometry. Schools will fully implement in the 23, 24 school year.
Okay. So the first set of standards that we're considering today are the revisions to the Arkansas math standards. Do we have a motion on the math standards?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Moore to approve the standards. Second by Ms. McFetridge. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you so much. Kisa, you can take a deep breath. All right, so the changes for ELA, we're standing now to share those changes. And Amy is going to come along with the ELA team to present those changes.
So again, like before, the two bullet points that are in black are consistent across the K-12 for English Language Arts. The first one is really about the organization of the English Language Arts standards. Were aligned to the science of reading and doing so?
aligned to the science of reading and doing so, we created a new strand that was specific to vocabulary and pulled some standards that had been in different sections and created a strand that was specific to vocabulary. So that was kind of the first big piece that's across the K-12 spectrum. And then also, our language standards were clarified at the grade levels to indicate when mastery was expected for specific skills. And so that will make that vertical alignment easier for our teachers as they, you know, begin to teach those skills in the classroom. I'm next to be joined by Ms. Sandy Shepherd, our RISE state lead, who will not hesitate to tell you what she thinks. Here she is.
You may ask yourself, why am I never in front of state board? There's a reason. I'm Sandy Shepherd from Learning Services. My job is to coordinate the RISE initiative across the state. I wanna explain some of the bullets because some of you might not be kindergarten teachers and you may think, what in the world's concepts about print? Right? So the first thing we changed was concepts about print used to be across K-2. What that really means is how a book works. So left to right progression, return sweep, every, every word I say can be written down, there are spaces between words. That was across K-2 because there were some sentence and paragraph things in first and second, and we moved those to language. We just wanted to narrow that down. The second part is handwriting. How many of y'all think handwriting's important? We do too. Handwriting really kinda stopped in third grade in our old standards. And because of that, by the sixth grade, our kids couldn't read cursive anymore. And we were getting cursed by the middle school teachers. So we didn't wanna do that anymore. So what we do now in K-1, we teach handwriting, manuscript handwriting, because that's the text they will be reading. Starting in second grade, we transition to cursive. And you know, there's a state law that says cursive by third. We continue it in fourth and fifth as an expectation. They don't really continue to do the handwriting training unless they don't know how to do that. But that, that will keep that going, I hope, because by the time they hit third grade, they need to be able to make notes more quickly, and cursive is the way to do that. So that's why we made that shift. Okay. Phonological and phonemic awareness, I know that's a big hot topic if y'all are, if y'all are paying attention to the science of reading. And we've tried to be really clear that our standards are based on studies. And there are a lot of things that are out that might work, but they don't know for sure. We don't have the study support for that. So we took the broad categories of phonological awareness. That means how many words are in a spoken sentence, how many syllables are in a word, and onset and rhyme. We took those out of standard because the research is clear that those don't lead to decoding and encoding. So we narrowed it down to the piece of the individual sound, the phoneme. That starts in kindergarten and goes to first grade. It was in K-2 standards, but it started as really preschool level standards in that larger phonological. So we've moved it down to the phonemic awareness level. And we did that based on the research and, and our expert that the secretary asked us to use, which I was a little irritated with at the beginning, but it worked out good. So, thank you for, thank you for making us go through that work again. Told y'all that's why I don't come here much. So we basically narrowed it from K-1 on purpose because that's where it needs to be. And it needs to be solid by the end of first grade. And if we're continuing to need that in second grade and up, that's an intervention, not core. And so that was our point. The last part is the articulatory features. There's tons of research that shows if you teach kids how to make the sounds, that really does translate in their decoding and their encoding. And then our phonics standards, we really clarified those. Now that, if y'all are looking at the phonics standards, you see decoding and encoding. And if you look at the encoding, it looks very ticky. It's very explicit on purpose. And so some of the comment we had in public comment was the decoding standards are not as specific as the encoding standards. We tried to be really careful because our, our quality instructional materials sometimes don't label things until first grade, even though they're introduced in kindergarten. So we wanted them to teach the concept without necessarily the label. And so we wanted that, that's why we sort of changed the decoding a little bit. When we got to encoding, we wanted to be really specific. The old standards were very broad. They said things like spell correctly. And that doesn't really help a kindergarten teacher know what is my expectation for teaching. We also created a document across K-5 that shows when the decoding skill is mastered and when the encoding skill is mastered, because sometimes it's not in the same grade. If you think about you as a learner, you can probably read more words than you can spell. So that's the same way with kids. Sometimes kindergarten, I can teach decoding and encoding in the same year. Sometimes I teach decoding and I have to wait a year for the encoding. So we switched those, really, we tried to use our experts to help us know when was appropriate, and we use many materials from researchers.
All right, for six through 12, again, the two first two bullet points are pretty much the same. And Amber Perneek is going to come and talk about some of the specific changes to six 12. And I'm gonna say about Amber, she's one of those people that you come to her with what you think is gonna panic her, and she's just gonna take a big, deep breath, and she's like, we're gonna make it work. So I'm really lucky to work with her. So Amber, come and talk about six 12.
I'm taking the lessons from Sandy, I'm gonna stay on script. Good afternoon, Amber Perneek, disciplinary literacy program manager in the Office of Learning Services. So a couple of things that I wanted to point out in this six 12 ELA standards is the addition of content standards in the literary and informational strands. They have been added to expose students to a wide range of the major works of literature. We took a chronological approach to where we aligned the eras covered in the social studies classes, so that as students are learning about world history in sixth grade, they're also reading literature from the same time period in their English class. And part of the feedback that we had from public comment was we, we desire a list of works that we could teach in our class. And so one of the documents that we are going to be working on is sample texts that teachers can use that line up with those eras. A second thing in the six through 12 ELA standards is a recitation standard of well-known works. This has been included to help students really improve their lexical knowledge, as well as increase their communication, enunciation, and cadence skills. Another thing I wanted to point out here based on the public comment is with the recitation, it did not necessarily mean that the students need to memorize something, but simply to read aloud and present. Finally, the grades nine, 10, and 11, 12 standards were uncoupled to allow for a strong vertical alignment.
So now we can take questions for the K-12 ELA, if you have any. One thing I actually, I did wanna clarify, the content standards that were added are not meant to determine all the literature that's taught in that grade. It is really just that students get, you know, get exposed to it. It could be a work or two works, but it is not intended to drive the content in that grade.
Any questions over here on ELA?
I do.
Dr. Moore?
Thank you all. I know this is a lot of work by all of you. I think I'll start K, looking at the elementary standards changes. I've heard it said that there is no one curriculum that is beneficial for a school to address all of the components of what a student needs to read. And I know that y'all's job is not to tell a school what curriculum to use. Is that true? And what kind of conversations you're all having because of these new standards with that?
That is true. There's not one that has bottom of the rope and top of the rope that's very well combined. There are some that attempt it, but they haven't done it yet, they're not quite there yet. So, I'm sorry, bottom of the rope skills are just getting the words off the page, so that decoding piece. And then top of the rope is understanding what you read. And so we usually end up having a dual adoption. They'll do something for the bottom of the rope, they'll do foundations, and they'll do phonics first. And then they'll do something for top of the rope, they'll do CKLA or Witten Wisdom. They aren't aligned to Arkansas standards because we've just now, you just are now getting the opportunity to say yes to these. So our next steps are to go through and help the, the co-op specialists, because our, our job this summer is to explain the standards. This is what we mean, this is how you assess them, these are the resources that we're gonna give you. And then the co-ops in their region might have a whole lot of schools using one curriculum piece. Okay, now how are we gonna line this out so that it matches? What nine weeks does this standard fit in? Which nine weeks does this standard fit in? Which ones make sense to be reported out as far as grades? So that's kind of a, we have a dual role. We're doing something at the state, and we're also helping the co-ops do that. And there's, we have a hard time doing that across the state because there's so many different ones, but in regions, they kind of focus on one to two.
And we just recently finished a statewide audit by grade level for ELA curriculums that are being used, which is gonna help us roll out those supports more efficiently.
I might jump in and add, if I can, with Dr. Pride's permission, I don't, I don't know, I defer to her. But, but I think another piece that's important is, to your point, we, we like to say that standards drive the curriculum, not the textbook. If, if there was a perfect textbook that met the needs of all students, then I would like to think that every teacher would be using that textbook. But every student comes to the classroom with their own unique set of skills and abilities. And what's great about LEARNS, where, where we wanna get the standards piece as built as that foundation, what's great about the LEARNS bill is it really also tests our agency at looking at a fragmented kind of component to some of the early learning, progress monitoring in kindergarten through second grade to align with the dyslexia screeners. We, we will not have the ability to do a statewide procurement that's gonna embed dyslexia screeners and embed a unified coordinated progress learning system, so that when we take those little snapshots in time on the students, if we have an aligned curriculum that has effective classroom-level tier-one instruction, we're gonna have better tools and then be able to have better resources aligned for students that have been identified as possibly having a substantial reading deficiency. And how do we work with those teachers in a 90-minute reading block so that we can set grade level expectation and then do small group intervention at a differentiated level for the appropriability for those students? So the, getting these standards is going to start building that foundation that will do the curriculum support work. And then the unified progress monitor is gonna give access to student performance in real time for those teachers to make pivots on those instructional decisions and not have to wait till the end of the school year, that we're gonna be able to tailor those interventions immediately.
That's great. And as, as I've looked and tried to dig in more into RISE and the work that's been done, the more I realize how incredibly complex this is and how much has changed over the past few years. And I feel that, I know a lot of teachers are overwhelmed by this curriculum, this curriculum, that. And so I think the more you're getting down to the student level to see what they need, the better in that sense.
And I, and I give this team a lot of credit because they've been leading this work for some time in realizing that we need an evidence-based approach to supporting the teaching of a systematic, explicit approach to teaching literacy was such a big movement for the state in the right direction. And to now look at these curriculums and saying, we're not gonna support three-Qing or whole language or approaches that we know don't have the evidence to work best for the students in the state of Arkansas, they've been leading this work. And some of the work that this team's been doing around dyslexia screening and supporting students that struggle in literacy, they've been leading for some time. And I, and I would even venture to say, they're probably light-years ahead of a lot of other states in this early literacy space. And what's really helping get this system aligned is by now going back and looking at the work that they've been, been engaged in around the science of reading and building out stronger standards that support the evidence in that research and then getting that aligned coordinated progress learning system is only gonna continue to see this team propel and benefit our students as we build those foundations. We're, we're gonna see drastic improvements.
Any questions over here? You got one more?
No, come back to me.
Okay.
I started looking through these last night, and as a special educator, this was so wonderful to see. I could see how I could build on IEP goals. It was so much more clear. And thinking about that special education lens and wanting to get our students as close to grade level and working on grade level standards, this is going to make writing IEPs so much better. The IEPs are gonna be stronger and our kids are going to learn more. So thank you for this work.
Any other questions?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
I know this, we talked about the handwriting piece in there. Where is typing addressed? What, in what subject area?
They speak to it, or y'all computers? There, there are typing standards, but they're not in, they're not in ELA. They're actually in a different set of standards.
And that, those appropriately align with how students are assessed, meaning that they're introduced and able to type before they're assessed through typing?
Yes. I'm gonna speak to that, even though I'm not an expert in that, that area.
And then along those same lines, six 12, I know there's a lot of national discourse about writing and students not being prepared in writing once they get to the collegiate level and beyond. How are writing standards addressed here? And do you feel like they are appropriately rigorous and will allow students to succeed in those areas?
So one of the changes that we did with writing is that we took a lot of standards that were very redundant and we kind of collapsed them. So where we have, where we might have standards that were very similar that supported argumentative writing, narrative writing, and we, we made them, kind of, we collapsed them into one. And so that helped us, you know, focus on, the, these writing skills are applicable to no matter what type of writing you're doing. And then in the style section, writing style, we have the more specific nuanced differences between the different writing types. And they do progress in complexity as they, you know, go through the grades, through the six 12.
Thank you. Any other questions on ELA? Dr. Pride?
All right, yeah, great. All right. So now to the part where we ask for consideration of ELA standards. We respectfully submit those to you, the State Board of Education, for approval. Again, this was an educator-driven process, and it was for K-12 for ELA. And they will go for implementation in the 23, 24 school year.
All right. We are ready for a motion on the Arkansas English Language Standards.
I'll do a motion to approve the standards.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Moore to approve the standards. Second by Mr. Henderson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Dr. Pride, I wanna say, okay, I wanna say thank you to you, your team. I, I see lots of smiles there because I know that they have worked tirelessly over this over the last few months. And, and we want to say, as a board, we appreciate your work, and, and I'm sure the teachers of the state will appreciate your work, but the work's just now starting. I see tears, because this, this, this is almost like having a new baby, isn't it? So, 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 so thank y'all for your work. We, we, we do appreciate you and we appreciate your hard work. See, that's the mic drop. There you go.
Thank you, Ms. Newton, for recognizing the hard work that they did. I'm gonna tell you, I don't even have to ask, how many of you cried? I would say every group. How many of you walked out of a meeting mad or upset? Yes. And even Dr. Pride coming to my office, she'd go, huh, we'll do it, we'll do it. So tomorrow, you're gonna see an, an additional group, because we're gonna honor them tomorrow. But these really are the curriculum leaders in our state for ELA and math. They are the curriculum leaders in our state for ELA and math. And when you say they did a two-year job in three months, they did. They rose to every, every bar we put for them. We said, we wanna go here, we're taking off some of these different restraints that you had before, couldn't go this way, couldn't go that way, go out and make them better. Very, very proud of the work that they did. It's easy to stand here before you and say, this is my team. They did the work. They did the work. So I just appreciate you taking the time to acknowledge them.
I just, real quick, before they disappear, because they're probably going back to start working on resource guides now. Just, just to echo some of the sentiments that Stacy Smith said, and, and I know I kinda came in here and this, this group was really moving down a wonderful path to help support teachers with expectations and clarity on what teaching and learning is. And I, and I can't, kinda came in new and just meeting folks for the first time and said, I, I see what, I see what we're doing here, but I, I wanna think a little bit differently about this and have we considered looking at a few different things and really put, put a, put a high bar and challenge? And I'm pretty sure they had some choice words for me after I left the room, but at the end of the day, I think they'll all say that the product that we're getting across the finish line today is one of the biggest wins we've accomplished in the last few months that we can do as a state agency that we know is gonna be directly attributable to seeing improved outcomes in learning. Getting these standards in the posture that they are, at the level and depth of support that we're gonna be able to provide, is going to give our educators, our talented teachers, the laser-like... teachers, the laser-like focus that they know that they can set that grade level expectation for every student, push accelerated opportunities, and then provide interventions when necessary. And the core foundational subjects in ELA and math have to be right. And this team spent probably every night and weekend for the last three minutes, or three months, with that mindset that says, "We can do this and we're going to get it right, and this is a big win, and they deserve all the recognition we can give them." So thank you.
Yeah, they did. Yeah. Yeah, there we go. All right. Well, thank y'all again for your hard work. All right. We're going to move on to our next item, consideration of recommendation for a waiver for first-time teacher licensure application fees. Dr. Pfeffer, we haven't seen you all morning.
Hi.
Yeah.
And I do want to say Greg Rogers had promised to do a cheer when they finished today, and Dr. Pride was trying to get him to fulfill it. So maybe we just hold him to that tomorrow morning with the rest of the crew.
There we go.
Anyway, thank you. And this item is here before you as part of our obligation to help fulfill one of the executive orders that the governor signed very early and set aside priorities for LEARNs to help lay that blueprint for what would become law. And we know that the educator workforce is one of the priorities of LEARNs, and especially to make it a priority to remove barriers, to get effective teachers in front of every student. And so the executive order asks that the department would work with the Professional Licenseur Standards Board and the State Board of Ed to examine the burden of licensure fees, particularly for new teachers. And in your packet, I believe you have an information sheet that shows an example of costs that a new teacher would incur because not only are they going to have to apply for that first-time license, they're also completing the requirements for licensure through their programs and taking their licensure tests. So that burden can be significant for a first-time licensee. The cost for the licensure fee is $124.25. $75 of that is the application fee. The remaining part is for the background check and the child, central registry, child maltreatment check. The licensure fee, it's $71.25 of that 75, does go to fund the Professional License Standards Unit. They oversee all of the Code of Ethics, the Professional Licenseur Standards Board, training for the Code of Ethics throughout the state. So those fees are put to good use. However, it has given us a chance to look at several of the different things that a new teacher would face. And after looking at the budget, talking with the PLSB, we feel comfortable in making a recommendation for you to waive the fees for first-time licensed seekers from May 1st to August 31st, 2023. That would be a four-month period when we have most of our new teachers seeking their first-time license. And we feel like we can manage the loss of revenue to that PLSB unit for that time period. So if you have any questions, I will try to answer those.
Any questions over here? Any kind of question over here? I don't see any questions. So we're, oh, we already have a motion. Dr. Sutton is ready to go. Dr. Sutton, Mr. Sutton.
You've got a promotion.
Dr. Sutton, I'll say you. All right. So I have a motion by Mr. Sutton to approve the waiver for first-time teacher licensure application fee. Do we have a second? Seconded by Dr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I know that's made a lot of first-time applicants very happy, so that's a good thing. Next are nominations for State Board Chair and Vice Chair. We had a committee work on that, and Mr. Henderson, you chaired that committee. So would you like to, I think that one will probably be easier, give a report of what your committee recommends?
Yes, first, I'd like to say I'm grateful for having the opportunity to chair such an important committee. We met last month. It was an open meeting. And what the recommendations we made to the, in the meeting was for Dr. Moore to be the Chair and also Kathy to be the Vice Chair.
Okay, so we will, I guess, first see if they are agreeable. Yes? Okay, so they are agreeable. So our option as a board is, are to vote this meeting or to reschedule it in May. So do we have any reason to wait? Is everybody okay with voting today? Nod some heads, yes or no? Okay, all right. So the first one, Mr. Henderson, would you like to make a nomination for Chair?
I'd like to make a motion for Dr. Moore to serve as Chair of the State Board of Education.
All right. Do we have a second? Seconded by Dr. Sutton. All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Do we have another committee member that wanted to make a nomination for Vice Chair? Or is Mr. Henderson the designated spokesman? Go for it, Mr. Henderson.
I'd like a motion for Kathy McFerris to be the Vice Chair of the State Board of Education.
All right. We have a motion for Ms. McFerris to serve as the Vice Chair. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Woods. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations, you two. I'm going to pass the microphone to y'all and give you a chance to speak.
Well, don't do that. I might ask too many questions. Thank you all for your trust in this. I have big footsteps to fill and look forward to working with all of you. I know we have a lot of work to be done, a lot of great work done by the agency that we're going to support. So look forward to doing that in this next year and appreciate you all.
This is a huge honor for me, longtime local school board member, and now to be on the State Board. I'm just still sometimes in disbelief that I'm in this chair and really how much it means to me. But, Quita, you've done an amazing job, and I know we'll get to celebrate you in July. So I appreciate all your work, and you've been a good example for all of us. So thank you.
I think y'all will be in great hands. I respect Dr. Moore and Ms. McFerris. I know that they will do a great job for you, and you did a good job with your committee and your choices. So thank y'all for serving. I really appreciate. Mr. Henderson chaired. Mr. Woods was on the committee, and Ms. Woods was on the, no? Ms. Hunter, that's right. That's right, Ms. Hunter. Boy, I messed that up, didn't I? Ms. Hunter, she couldn't be with us today, but Ms. Hunter was the other one that served on the committee. So I really appreciate them serving and doing that for us. And I look forward to watching online and not being here. Okay, all right. So I think that's the end of our action agenda for today. So we're going to move on to our reports section. Does anyone from the board have something that you would like to share in the board reports? Okay. Here, yeah, that'll be easier. Just tie it on, he said. This is a pine, do you tie it out?
Okay. Just wanted to give you an update on some things happening in Northwest Arkansas. And one of the things that happened a couple weeks ago, it was a Build My Future event. It was a huge career fair in Northwest Arkansas where there were over 1,300 high school students that participated. And I think the really unique thing about this opportunity for the students is they actually went through booths and visited with different career employers, but they got to do some really hands-on things. So they brought in equipment and they got to do some welding. Secretary Aliva, I think you talked about doing some welding and, but they did all kinds of activities. And so just a real exciting time. And I was given some T-shirts, and I will bring them tomorrow. I didn't think we wanted to try and travel with T-shirts. But anyways, it was a great opportunity, and I hope sometime they could come down and present and help maybe different areas of the state do something like this as well.
I think this is an area of the state that is really hungry for something like that. So that would be great. Anyone else on the board have something you would like to share? Okay, Mr. Wood.
I believe two weeks ago, the AAEA announced that the Elementary Principal of the Year is Stephen Helmick, and he is my kid's principal. And so there's a certain amount of pride that goes into just how good of a leader he is of his team. And it was very exciting for him to be honored, to be in the school, to see the school. You just know that there is something special there. And Stephen, if you hear this, it's 100% because of your leadership. And so congratulations on your well-earned award. You're doing a fantastic job.
I'm sure Dr. Hernandez will be bringing him before the board soon to recognize his honors.
Two weeks ago, I had the privilege of attending an event down in Stuttgart, Arkansas, that the State Chamber hosted with the Be Pro, Be Proud. We had, I want to say probably at least a couple thousand people there, students, high school students, technical students from all over the state. And the governor actually attended that event herself. And, you know, I was also privileged to sit on stage with her. Dr. Moore was there. Really good event, an excellent turnout. And it was really nice to see a lot of the CTE professionals there, you know, recruiting, just exposing the students and high schoolers to career technical education.
I put a bug in a lot of the superintendents that were here this morning to reach out to you, to think about what can we do about CTE in this region of the state.
I just wanted to comment that, as I understand it, Secretary Aliva, you've completed your meetings with, how many co-ops? How many? Fifteen. I don't know if any of you were able to visit a co-op meeting that he would hold. Last month, I attended Crowley's Ridge, and I likened his event there like walking into a lion's den. There was probably at least 16 to 20 superintendents, assistant supes, et cetera. And his presentation was very good, and I think it was well-received, but sometimes it wasn't all that warm and fuzzy. But I was proud to be a member of the board with, under your leadership.
Along that line, I went to the one at Dawson, and it was very well-received. And I think the superintendents and the leaders that were there went away feeling better about what was going on in the state than, you know, sometimes you get scared when you don't know information, but when somebody comes and presents it in such a clear, concise, and just seeing the whole picture really helped them, I think. And so I really, I know they do, and I appreciate you taking the time to go and visit the co-ops and visit with the superintendents to give them the information that they need to be able to go forward. So, and it was very well-received, so I appreciate you doing that. And thank you, Mr. Sutton, for bringing that up. All right. Anything else from the board? All right. Then your commissioners' report.
So that was part of, part of my updates was to talk about, and I'm glad Mr. Sutton... Oh, yeah. I'll keep it, get that red light going. Was to talk a little bit about kind of the, where we were with next steps with the LEARNs. Now, at the last time we were here, if you remember, we had just signed the LEARNs bill, and we made a commitment to get in front of every superintendent in the state. So we did 15 in-person cooperative visits. We did one with Charter School Networks in person, and we even hosted some community town forum, virtual town halls, where we had over, I think, 1,000 parents register for one of them at one point. So most of you know Dan, and he's not here today because he does a lot of our behind-the-scenes. But one of his many duties is to keep track of our vehicle fleets, if that makes any sense. So A, I give a shout-out to him and his team for making sure our vehicles were always ready. But on this tour, I've been informed that we've hit enough miles to need an oil change on one of the cars because I've done over 5,000 miles on Arkansas roads in the last three weeks. So we've been really, really busy. And I know some of you have been able to attend some of those presentations, and I appreciate your support, and it's an honor to represent this board and this agency and to work on the LEARNs initiative. And just even being here today in a community that is asking us to utilize the flexibility that LEARNs allows. This is one of the boldest, most comprehensive innovation, innovative pieces of legislation that we've seen on a national level. And now that people are understanding the vision and understanding how this is designed to support schools and improve learning, and it's going to give districts the flexibilities they need to implement the strategies that they know will work best for them, it's going to be well-received. So I continue to be honored to lead this work and to work with a team that has embraced this work. And we saw the work, the quality of work that the standards folks are doing. And even if you remember early in Governor Sanders tenure, she signed several executive orders that asked us as an agency to review a lot of things. And a lot of those orders had a 90-day timeline to complete some pretty comprehensive studies and reviews. And I'm happy to announce that we've completed and met the deliverables on top of standards, on top of making sure we're out in visible in districts, we're getting the work done. And this is above and beyond kind of our already day-to-day operations. So when I tell you the team at this agency is exceptional and has stepped up to the challenge of creating the conditions as adults that will set up students to be successful, we really, really do have a marvelous team. But we recently activated an online portal that we'll be promoting here pretty soon, and it's pretty easy to find. It's HTTPS colon forward slash learns dot A D E dot Arkansas dot gov. And it's a one-stop shop on updates on where we are with executive orders and all the summaries and all the reports. And I'll encourage you to share it with everybody as we're moving forward. And we also put out the call for work groups, which we're going to talk a little bit about the next steps for the policy around LEARNs and rules that we know our board is going to have to be involved in. And we've overwhelmingly positive amount of support for folks saying we're willing to be a part of the process. So we've received over 1,200 inquiries about how can we get more involved? We want to, we want to support this vision. We want to support this mission. So we'll spend a little bit more time tomorrow talking about the next steps and where we're going. We know the education session has recently ended, and so we, to date, there's been, our team has said, as of Monday, 31 pieces of education legislation that has been signed into law. And I think there's a couple more that are trickling in this week. So we're going to work on a comprehensive, probably for the next board meeting, an update on what bills have passed, which ones will have some kind of educational impact. And some of those policies are going to engage us in rule-making process. So I'm delighted for the Chair and the Vice Chair to say yes, knowing how much work is coming your way. So we're going to have a lot of fun. But I want to just do a little brief update on our agency's response to the tornadoes that we experienced across the state about a week and a half ago. And we had some communities that had some devastating impact that have a long-term, that are going to have a long-term impact where they're going to be navigating the rebuilding phase for the next couple of years. And if there's one thing that we know, that anytime a community is hit by a natural disaster, returning to a And if there's, there's one thing that we know that anytime a community is hit by a natural disaster, returning to a sense of normalcy is the first step in the rebuilding process. And that starts with opening schools. And we, we were able to look at some impacted committee, communities, especially in the Little Rock, North Little Rock area. Where loss of opportunity to participate in in-person learning was very minimal. In fact, maybe even one day for some of these communities. So the, those teams, I, I just want to give the superintendents and the leaders and the emergency responders in those communities the credit that they deserve for prioritizing, making sure schools were able to be open and welcoming students. But we had one, one area that got pretty significant impact in the Wind Community. And in fact, I'm, me and some of the other teams, we, we were there on the next day seeing what we can do as an agency to open the doors to support and, and order stuff. And I know Greg was pretty happy when we got his credit card limit lifted so we can make some purchases. So I'm going to have to check some of these statements. But we, we, we went to the table saying, what, what are we going to do to get schools open? And, and we set a challenge that we were going to only be closed for a week. And I think a lot of people didn't believe we could hit that challenge. But Wednesday, yesterday, we were able to welcome in some form or fashion, all the K A students back in the district and some of the high school students that we finished on this week. So that community that has some, some pretty significant damage, they lost a, a school and had significant damage to an additional school. The students are only going to lose five days of instruction on their school calendar and get, get back into where they belong with their friends and their peers and get the programs. They're, they're, they had a soccer game last night and we're, we're getting, we're getting everything back up and running. And, and some of our team have been temporarily reassigned there and they've been going there every single day and spending all day in these communities, doing whatever they can and all weekend. And we're, it's just a testament to the quality of talent we have in our agency, that there's no challenge, that they're not up to the task force. But I'm, I'm really excited to, to say that we're proud of the folks, especially in the Wind Community Superintendent, the Board Chair and, and everybody that rallied together to get these students back into school. It's, it's a big deal and this is why the state's special.
I appreciate your, your work on the behalf of the students of those communities. And I know those communities do because like you said, getting kids back in school is, is huge. And so we appreciate your efforts there. All right, Ms. Smith, you're back up again? Aren't you getting tired yet?
I'm so tired.
We did have her up pretty early yesterday.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of early mornings this week. So again, this is doing our quarterly reports for our schools that are under state authority. And today I asked my team to stay on-site. Normally they don't come to the state board meetings because their time in schools is the most important. And so that's where they spend their time. But I asked them to stay today because I've, I've been a little busy and I know if we got into some detailed conversations, I was going to need backup. So these are the folks on, on the, on the ground that are doing most of the work. And I also just wanted to acknowledge this too. I don't know if we, did we acknowledge that Arkansas PBS is here and doing all this streaming work today? I mean, they really are truly our partners in so many avenues and so many things. And so I appreciate you guys and what you do. All right, Pine Bluff. Some of the things I want to tell you about Pine Bluff real quick, and I'm just going to give you some highlights. I'm not going to read the report to you or tell you everything in it. If you have something specific you want to dig down in a little bit more, we'll bring one of these guys to the microphone. They're hoping you don't ask any questions. But I sent everybody who was sitting in front of them away so you could get a good shot of them, right? All right, the district, we continue to do our district walkthroughs, looking for instruction in the classroom. That is a priority, making sure that we are in those classrooms. We have a minimum amount that we expect from every administrator. Jennifer Barbary is the new superintendent that started mid-year. She's doing a fabulous job. She was on our team and so it was kind of an easy transition. But I will tell you, she's called me multiple times to say, oh, I'm working hard, I'm working hard. And I always say, I know you are, but you're doing the work and, and we're really proud of you. This team back here has her back and, and I'm going through Jessica's presentation, I think I'll, okay. We'll have to get it back in the right spot here in a minute. But they're doing their district walkthroughs and making that a priority to make sure instruction is the focus. They did a staffing audit in Pine Bluff and 41% of the staff is non-licensed. So right now we are working on moving staff around. Jennifer made the decision with their working board that we are going to move the students from Dollarway High School to Pine Bluff High School, 10th through 12th grade. 10th through 12th grade at Pine Bluff High School has been very successful this year. Safe environment, they're focusing on instruction, think things are going, going well. Moving our Dollarway kids over will be a, a transition piece. Ms. Barbary and the school board there is making transition plans. They're meeting with student councils, they're meeting with parent groups. They've put out videos to communicate. Jack Robey is a junior high and Ryan or Michael, if I say something wrong, you'll jump up here, okay? Jack Robey is a junior high. It is one of the older buildings. It's not been very well maintained. Those students will be moving out of that building into some of the Dollarway campuses that are in better shape. They are exploring a ninth-grade academy possibility. So they, they have got lots of things talking. The board has been very involved in being a part of it, to be the solution, being very supportive. The community, you saw how supportive the community has been showing up to state board meetings. That same support and enthusiasm we are seeing from those community members. Some of them were a little surprised by the Jack Robey closure. But at the end, they said, we trust our board and we trust our superintendent and thank you for giving us the information and we know something needs to be done. So I, I think it's, it's been fairly well-received. You want to add anything to that?
I can't wait for one of you to say yes.
So the board's being successful and that's what we want. I mean, I think this was a smart move to put the board back together a year in advance. Slowly working, I'm going to meet with the board president on Monday. I'm going to have a Zoom with him and the superintendent to kind of just do a status check in. They're eager to go back to full authority. They still need a lot of support, but their board is working right now. So I think, I think that's, that's, that's promising. We did lose two students to gun violence this last quarter. And, and two is too many. If you can remember last year, I think we lost eight. So right now we're at two, but two too many. But I will say that this was the most supportive community support for the school. Dr. Watson back there and Ryan, stand up. These two guys right there, in, in an instant of a call, they were at Dollarway High School where one of the students was lost. Eric Saunders over there, stand up, stand up too. Eric showed up, Jerry Kiefer showed up and we were meeting kids as they were walking in. And they, we had a system built, they were getting services right then. And that had never happened before. If you remember, the students at Pine Bluff walked out after losing several classmates, saying, nobody cares and nobody's doing anything. There was a response at both high schools in the same district who lost a kid. And these guys are to be commended for that. So right now, right sizing the school with their staffing. So closing that Dollarway High School and having a whole other high school set up, moving that staff over. We're going to make sure as we're looking at licensing and that 40%, I told you about the staffing audit, we're going to get some right sizing done there, okay? We will be, our teachers that have 1240s, they have been the first to be notified, but they're not being renewed. We're going to go again after people who are licensed and ready. If we have to fill it with a 1240, we will, next. But we're, our goal every time is to go after the best qualified person to put in front of them. Okay, so working really hard in Pine Bluff. Lee County, a lot of focus on Lee County's work with professional learning communities, I would say of our districts under state authority. They have really led the effort, being very effective. Sheila Whitlow directly works with them on this work. She's been a great coach and a very leader. Lee County has been a place that other districts have gone to sit and watch how they're doing their data meetings. Jessica, I think you got to see it too, didn't you? Yeah, it was pretty good stuff, wasn't it? Yeah, so they are really digging into their data, they're compiling their data and they're using that information to make decisions on what classes students need to be placed in and how interventions need to be set up. It's not perfect, don't have every, you know, piece covered. We are losing our high school principal, which I, you know, he was, he was commuting. Building capacity and raising leaders in the communities is so important because we keep having those turnover pieces. So we're going to go find another superstar, I'm confident. Correct, Sheila? That's right. Another project we're happy to kind of be launching is a teacher housing project there, using our S R P money that we have. We're hoping to be able to kind of get that launched in the next month. So I'll keep you updated on that.
What did you say that was?
A teacher housing project.
Teacher housing, okay.
We're building houses. We're building some duplexes. If, if housing is a problem in our area and we're recruiting people, we're going, we're going to build some housing. So first in the state to do it.
Wow.
School district? It'll be a part of their, yeah, part of the contract piece. Is it three? It's not fiscal, so it starts with, it's on the data. So we're, your three? Three. Your three. So we should be looking at, if we're going to consider something like we do with Pine Bluff next year, start thinking about, talking about putting to them together some type of a board. Okay. Helena West, Helena? Yeah. Let's see here. Let's see, March 25th, they were, let's see. I think it might've been in May 2019. Is it illegal or anybody looking at that? Does that sound about right? Somebody there will have an exact date in just a second for you.
So next, next month would be the four-year mark of that.
Yes, okay.
Yes, so I, I just wanted to highlight that and make sure we were clear on that. Because I do think that if the Pine Bluff model is being successful, I wanted to bring attention to that for Lee County as well.
Thank you, thank you. Helena West, Helena, again, so this is the first year for Helena West, Helena with our new superintendent. This was a recent, a more recent takeover. Still doing a lot of work with personnel. Keith, Dr. McGee, he's doing an excellent job for us. I mean, I cannot, excellent job. It, it is a daily, if not, there's something every day. And it's, it's big stuff and it's stuff we're in, and a lot of it's personnel-related that I can't go into details, that we're having to adjust. These are personnel and folks that we've inherited. And so we're doing our, doing what we need to do to, if folks need to be dismissed, dismissed. If folks need to be moved around, we're being moved. If folks, if we need to riff, we're riffing. The priority is quality people in the classrooms for our students. And we've already had, Keith is great about direct conversation. Again, Sheila is his direct assistant superintendent from the state, helping. She does a great job coaching him in areas to, to get him prepared to what to do. We did not dissolve the board from Helena. So I have to give, again, Sheila a lot of credit and Keith a lot of credit. We've been doing a lot of board training while we're going on. For, at the beginning, when we first take, took over, they wanted to go over the check register, check by check and get into detailed questions. Well, how many water fountains is that? How many, just hours and hours. This last board meeting, they've been working with Janelle Keating under the professional learning communities model with their board. Last board meeting was less than an hour. Very professional, the board president was here today. They, they're, they're pulling it together and they're again, being supportive of the vision that Dr. McGee has laid out. But he is also very direct when we're not, where we're supposed to be or we're getting in lanes we're not supposed to be in. He redirects as needed. And so we're, we're, and contracts, you know, at the beginning of the year, we had a lot of contracts that were questionable. He has done an excellent job on not just bringing anything to the board to sign. He vets everything and our folks help with that. Still needing to do a lot of work in the special education unit there. Remember, they were going to be cited and our stance on that was quit monitoring them, cite them and let's get in there and work with them. Don't spend our time monitoring, we know it's wrong. Get in there and let's work with it. That's what our team's doing. Julie Omsdottis is back here, Julie, stand up. You may not be able to see this because she keeps them covered, but she really has angel wings underneath that. She is amazing. And when we talk about, when we get, have our OCSS meetings and I'll say, guys, what's a success? She shared a story about, hey, we've gotten a kid a wheelchair. Hey, we found a kid, we got a kid hearing aids. Hey, we got a kid, you know, something for revision. She is always telling personal stories because she sees a kid and knows we got to do better than that. So she takes it to a very personal level and she does what she needs to do to make sure kids are getting what they need. So very proud of the work she's doing. Lot of work still to do in Helena though. Okay, Earl School District, this is the district I probably have the most concern about. And they are approaching their fifth year and they're, they're in their fifth year. Their timeline ends June 30th. The concern for Earl. And we'll probably have to have a bigger work session on Earl at some point. They're a small rural district, similar to what we have here at Marble. When we make progress, we have constant turnover, staffing, instruction. We are continuing to do our instructional rounds there. We see growth at times in the elementary school, then we'll see at times in the high school. We did have a personnel issue with a high school principal this year. So they've lost their high school principal, it needed to happen. And so now it's kind of like we lost any traction we had going there because a lot of people had kind of bought into him. So it just seems like we're, we're just, we're cycling. Making progress, we take two steps forward and sometimes I feel like we've taken three steps back. So we are in the fifth year. So some of the conversations today around how does Arkansas learns play into this? And is there a third-party entity that we need to be thinking about? As we're looking at their board coming back on, maybe in a limited capacity. There, there are some bigger decisions to be made there. So I will be coming back to you guys specifically around Earl and then probably the next month. Do you have any questions? Anybody got a good, good hard question for at least one of these guys back here? Sarah?
I don't have a hard question, but I had noted the Pine Bluff high number of non-licensed teachers. I know all these districts have Act 1240 waiver teachers. Are you all requiring them to be on some sort of pathway to licensure? I know, I'm hoping they all have mentors, but have there been conversations about that as, as to?
Yeah, they're all expected to be on a pathway and to achieve their license within three years.
Contracts?
Yes. And those that don't, I mean, but we, because we are closing buildings and moving folks. Ms. Barbary has notified all 1240 people they're being non-renewed. We're getting people in the right places and then we're going to go back and look at those folks.
In all these districts, the $50,000 minimum salary is huge. I mean, a huge increase for a lot of these teachers. Do you feel that these districts have the capacity right now to advertise that to not only our state, but surrounding states in the Delta here? To be really, I mean, this is the time to recruit teachers.
So everybody's, yeah, so Dr. Saunders has done an excellent job working with all of our districts in setting their salary schedules and getting to that $50,000 mark and recruiting. We've got people staying because the salaries are going up. I mean, we, we're hearing that. So it is an opportunity to recruit and these districts are doing that as well.
Any other questions for Ms. Smith?
All right, I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. You've done, and I just want, while you're there, you've patted everybody else on the back. Let's pat Ms. Smith on the back because she has done an outstanding job this week. We appreciate her. All right, so we are now ready for our ATOE report, Ms. Saum. Or should I call you Ms. Post?
Okay, I am excited to share some exciting things from the last month. This first slide is from CTE Day at the Capitol. I too learned to do a welding simulator. I think I did a little bit better than Secretary Aliva, but no evidence. But that was really neat. This was a great event. It was great to see students showcasing what they're learning, what they're doing. And I have a chance to show off in the Capitol. And it was great to see so many community partners there as well, celebrating our students. I was also able to go to West Side Elementary in Grist Berry with the special education team. And it's an inclusive practices project school for special education. And so we were able to visit a lot of the classrooms, see how they're using staff and being innovative in that, using the P E. being innovative in that, using the PE teacher to do some interventions. They're pulling staff to use all of the members in that school to teach all students. And I think going forward, when we're considering how we're going to provide these services, I hear a lot of schools say, "We're concerned about staffing, having to hire new people." A lot of it's going to be getting innovative with the people that we have, elevating our paraprofessionals to be in classrooms and to use them, not as babysitters. They're not there just to sit side by side with a student. They're there to teach and support and be used across the classroom. So, it was great to see in this school how they were utilizing that to sit with students. It was also Read Across America time, so I was able to read with a class and just see different approaches to inclusive practices, different ways to serve all students in multiple different settings, and knowing that sometimes we are still going to have to pull small groups out of the class to give that intervention, but we're not serving all students out of the general education classroom all day long. They're getting access to that curriculum, and they're getting an opportunity to learn and succeed alongside their typically developing peers. So, that was a really, really great visit. I thoroughly enjoyed it, and the special education team from the department has been incredible in teaching me and including me and encouraging me in this work. I was also able to go to BB High School and speak to their students that are, they're ed-rising, they're in that future educators program there, and just talk to them a little bit about education. Learns was coming out, and so, they were having questions about this and how that could impact them in their future. And we met with their administrators and their teacher, but then, when their administrators left, they just sat down and wanted to talk about teaching, the experiences they had had in classrooms with students at the high school level. And they're all on that path to have the certified teaching assistant before they leave high school. They're taking those concurrent classes through ASU BB. And I, the CTE programs are something very new to me, being an elementary teacher, and I've been able to participate in some of these different career path programs. And this is amazing, to have students in high school already on that pathway, to know what they're getting into. They're not going into college not having been in a classroom. They've been with students, they've been around teachers, learning alongside them. And I think that is really going to set up our teacher pipeline with people who are wanting to enter the profession and having experience before they even start that college pathway. Then Read Across America Week, was able to go just to a bunch of different classrooms, anytime I could, read with students, read Dr. Seuss books, and celebrate reading and the importance of reading in our state. I think I have a couple other, I have, that was the same dress I had on at CTE Day, but I had to go read with students that morning, and it was crazy sock day at their school. So, that's what the socks are all about. And this was a preschool. The teacher on the right is actually a teacher I did an internship with in 2009 in a pre-K setting. And so, anytime I can go back and see these teachers that taught me and thank them for what they taught me is really great. And then, reading their classrooms or just see how they're continuing to impact students' lives is incredible. And then, this Arkansas PBS group, I love these people, they are incredible. I cannot brag on them enough. We shot, we've worked on two courses for Arkansas Ideas just in this last month. I don't have pictures from one because we started earlier this week, but we worked on a course at the Little Rock Air Force Base, that's the library there on base, on how teachers can best support our military-connected students. We shared information about the Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission, and this is Month of the Military Child, so we're working to get that out. And just to have a resource for teachers to know and understand how to best serve these students that are often transient and have a unique set of needs was really, really incredible. Don Caminar is there as well, and he is with the department. And just his experience and expertise was so nice to have. And then, if you see the woman next to me in the blue blazer, she is another military spouse who is also on the news here in Little Rock, Cassandra Webb. And so, she and I were stationed in Little Rock together, our spouses' first assignments, and now, our husbands work together again. And so, it was great to have her as the moderator for this course and kind of bring all of that full circle. Just a few more behind-the-scenes photos of that. And then, I was able to go to the Southwest Educational Service Co-op and talk to novice teachers, again, about inclusive practices in special education. A lot of teachers there are coming in, some on non-traditional pathways, and they struggle in understanding how to meet the needs of all students. And so, again, anytime we can have real conversations about what are you seeing in your classroom, maybe I've seen it, maybe it's something I've experienced or talked to other teachers about, and how they can include that in serving students is great. And I think these novice teachers, this is when we can really grab them and make a difference. And so, I love, anytime I have the chance to talk to teachers starting their careers. And then, I was able to go to the Saline County Technical Center. Again, these tech programs are incredible. The simulator that you could pick the different, it was like a front-end loader, a digger to drive, and just seeing all these students, and these are students from all the different schools coming in. There was medical courses, the auto shop, all these different courses available to them. And this is just incredible, the opportunities they are going to have leaving high school with already having these experiences or certifications. And so, these programs are so important. And again, I think as a teacher and as a special education teacher, who, college may not be the pathway the students I teach initially seek out, they can still have career opportunities. And providing them with these experiences is opening doors for their future. So, I love seeing these programs across our state. And then, we've talked a lot about Learns today. It was an honor to be there for the bill signing, just an incredible experience and such a historical moment for our state and for education. And so, I just wanted to make sure we highlighted that. And I think today, we've seen a community that is going to benefit greatly from this legislation. And then, Lone Oak Reads, which incredible event. Ebony Mitchell was there, as well as Craig O'Neil, and all the students in Lone Oak gathered together. We ended up moving the event inside because of the weather, but we all read the same book at the same time at different stations around the room, and they had a bounce castle and all these different things for the kids to have fun. I have told Venus is the ATOE coordinator, and I've told her that I've had to share space with Ebony so much, and she's always in these beautiful gowns, and, you know, I'm in a sequin jacket and sneakers. And so, I've told her at some point before this year's over for me, I'm showing up in something Ebony wears to an event. So, I think she's, she's a little bit nervous about that, but this crew was just incredible. And what an amazing group to celebrate reading in our state and with our students with. This is my son Tucker on the right. I was able to go to his middle school's Quiz Bowl and realize that I know much less than most of these students. It is unbelievable the things that they know and can do. And I just, I love watching them learn and watching them work as a team and share what they know. And so, that was a really great day. And I left my computer at home and went to New York City with my kids and my mom for spring break, which was just incredible. We saw shows and all of the sights. My son and I went to a hockey game, and it was just such a special time for all of us and for my kids to have that moment with my mom as well, because she's out of state. I did want to share a part of the, I think, maybe the next slide, yes, the next slide, part of the Presidential Leaders Program that I'm in, we were at the Bush Library last month. And so, to be able to go to the World Trade Center Museum, I just read his book in Chapter Five, Details, 9/11. And then, his museum really goes through his presidency in a beautiful way, No Child Left Behind. It's almost like a timeline. And to see the monuments to 9/11 there was really incredible. And of course, we were able to hear President Bush speak. And as enjoyable as President Clinton was, President Bush was completely different and equally as enjoyable. But learning leadership through these presidents, he openly talked about places that he messed up, failures that he had, and things he should have done differently. And I just think about that in my own career, in my own future, and admitting mistakes and what I could do better and what I will do better. And I really respected that and respected hearing him speak to that. But just, again, an incredible group of 60 professionals from all over the US. There's a member from each one of our military services there, heart doctors, surgeons, I mean, it's an incredible group to learn advocacy and to learn leadership alongside. And then, I'm sure some of you have seen in the newspaper, Mickey Young is a student at Sylvan Hills High School, and the hands picture in the back on the right-hand side is the picture that she's had all this attention from. She is an incredible artist. She's graduating high school this year. She's going to college on a full ride with all the scholarship money for art, and probably one of the most humble, kind students I have ever met. She almost was embarrassed by all of the attention she's gotten, which she should not be, but just, her teachers were bragging on her. Not only is she an incredible artist, she's a good student, she's in the band, and she's just a kind, kind friend to her classmates. So, to see some of her artwork, to hear her accomplishments was wonderful. And again, I was able to tour the rest of the high school with their principal. He took the morning to show me some of the programs that they're doing and brag on everything that they are accomplishing for students there. So, that was a really great morning. Craig O'Neil, again, at Stevens Elementary, he did a book, March Madness Book Bracket Competition all throughout March, and this was the last day of it. So, I read The Gruffalo, and my book won, and so, it was so much fun. And again, he let me roller skate there. He asked me to roller skate, so that's always a good time. But we went in and we read these books to the students, celebrated reading, and made it fun for them. And so, he's doing incredible work throughout our state to focus on education, to encourage teachers, and to support reading. And I, you know, I hope, I know he's getting close to wanting to retire, but I hope he continues with that work. And I went straight from there to Batesville. They had a full-day event about being a teacher. So, I was able to have lunch with special education teachers from Independence County to speak to people who were pursuing teaching, maybe they had a bachelor's degree or associate's degree, but did not have that teaching certification. So, they had an event, I think Melissa Jacks from the department was also there, supporting them finding a pathway to teaching. And so, they're really doing a good job to recruit new teachers in that area. And then, we even met with students who, again, were in those education-rising programs in their schools there. They asked incredible questions. I'm always in awe of students who seem so much more mature than their age, that are just really preparing for really successful futures and whatever that teaching looks like for them. And they had incredible questions about keeping students safe, the teacher assessment system, they're already thinking about that. Well, what about tests when I have to be evaluated? And so, it was, it was great to just talk to them and have some real discussions about what teaching is really like. And then, Stacy, convinced me to, to take another beauty queen with me to do an event. But Ms. White River created a confidence curriculum for students, and it's weeks' worth of curriculum that they can use to become more confident. And so, we went to this Bryant Middle School Women's History Month Career Fair, and she had her curriculum with her and was talking to students. And middle school students need help with confidence. The girls and the boys that were wanting to talk to her, to want, to want to hear about her experiences, she's still in college, so just for us to be able to share that, that space and to talk with students was really, really wonderful. And she was just such a pleasure to be around. And I think she wants to go into communications, but we're still, we're trying to push her towards education because she clearly does have a passion for it, and it would be incredible doing that. So, yes, of course, you can see all of the students wanted to meet her. And then, again, I mentioned earlier, April is the Month of the Military Child. That's my daughter on the left. And then, we were able to do a proclamation at the Little Rock Air Force Base, University Center at the front of the base, and so, recognize some of our military members and a military child there, and just really celebrate, again, those unique sacrifices and things that our military-connected children have to deal with. And we have a large group of military children in Arkansas, and it's only going to grow as we get more planes in Fort Smith and across our state. So, it's just a really great time to acknowledge those sacrifices that those children make. And then, again, I always like to focus on teachers who I think are changing lives because not always, they're not always recognized. They're not looking for recognition, they're not looking for something to be bragged about. But this is Ms. Ursery, she is a high school AP physics, and some, she teaches some other AP course at the high school. And she has just taken interest in my son and wanting to encourage his interest in science. So, we were able to go after school at the end of one of her courses and for him to have this experience in her science lab and learn with her. And she did not have to give up her own time. She did not have to invite him to do that, but she mentioned it a while ago and stayed on me to make sure to bring him. And I just think when teachers are investing in students who aren't even their students, it's incredible how they can encourage them. And again, what doors we're opening for future options in career or just interest. These are some of my Teacher of the Year cohort from the 2022 year on the left with our Great Teachers Change Lives shirts. And then, my daughter on Career Day dressing up as her music teacher. Again, that, this, music was not her thing until this year, when this teacher entered her life. And so, I just don't think it can be understated from our cafeteria workers, our custodial teams, our music teachers, our classroom teachers, all of these amazing people in our schools played a direct impact and influence in our children and making, making their lives better and determining, she says she wants to be a music teacher when she grows up now. I mentioned to her Teacher Commitment Signing Day tomorrow. She's like, "Well, I'm going to be a teacher." And so, I said, "You know what? Someday you'll get to go to one of these, too." So, I just, I think we need to always celebrate when teachers are impacting our students. And then, I have to brag on my daughter's team again. At the last meeting they were at in the Russellville for the state championship for design, they won for design, and they are going to Worlds in Dallas the first week of May, and I'm going to be able to go with them. This was an after-school club. Those teachers are not receiving a stipend, they are giving their time after-school weekends into the evenings to support this all-girls robotics team, who, the robot wasn't necessarily the best, but they keep winning for their design and their interview, and now they're getting to go to Dallas to this world championship. And it has changed, you talk about confidence in a child, it has changed my daughter and a lot of these girls' insight as to what they can do and who they are. And so, I just, I appreciate that group, that group of educators from Stagecoach Elementary. And then, I always like to show some things I'm doing out of school. I ran the Little Rock 5K and half marathon and did not train appropriately for it, but I loved that sign, that bless your heart. That's how I felt running that weekend. The roller derby season has started up. If you didn't know that about me, Secretary Aliva, I play roller derby here in Little Rock. And so, that season has started up as well, and so, I've been skating a lot more. And then, this was just another opportunity to be with this amazing PBS team and film an introduction, letting people know about those Arkansas Ideas courses that are coming. And before I end, I wanted to say one thing. When we talk about our students, and you hear me talk about inclusion and inclusive practices for special education a lot, I just got a text message when we were here this morning that said, "B, a student wants to call you today. When's the good time?" And I was just saying, I couldn't really talk, bad internet service, but I could text later, and then I get a text. This is the student. "My math score is in 205, I'm in the green." This is a student in my class just a few years ago who could not make it through a school day. He's able to text me on his teacher's phone to tell me about his accomplishments and his growth on testing. This is what it's all about. So, I just, I love it. So, thank you guys so much. I only have a few more of these, so.
All right. We'll have to get you to roller skating on the last one. All right.
One more brag. She was in win twice last week.
Okay, so she was in win. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I was, and win yesterday and last week. It's incredible to see the department's support and rallying. And I meant to say, I'm sorry, your team also has been incredible at just bringing me in, showing me what's happening, including me, and that this is the real deal. We were not exaggerating on the work that they're doing. So, thank you.
All right. Okay, so, I think that's the end of our reports section, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone have anything on the consent agenda they would like to discuss or pull?